Did you find out about reports?
Yeah, they just don't, we just haven't had one this meeting and I can't remember that, but we've had trouble with reports running long and so maybe we can, maybe we can figure, see if we can spread them out.
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know?
It seems like we've been going over quite a bit. That'd be good if we could, if we have one week that we don't have them, maybe we ought to just spread them out.
Well, this video, did you ever get a chance to look at that cutting edge engineering? That Australian guy I told you about?
Yes, I have.
Kind of fun, huh?
Kind of neat, yeah.
It's my, it's my de-stress there.
Yeah, it's neat. Are we ready?
Yeah.
All right, our clerk says we're ready to go, so we'll welcome everyone here present. It's been, it's kind of light today, glad to have you two here. And those online, we welcome you to this commission meeting this Monday, the fourteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-five. It is a little after nine o'clock. We will begin our meeting this morning with a opening prayer and that'll be offered by Ken Robinson, Commissioner Robinson. And following his prayer, Bruce Washburn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You're good right there. Our dear Father and Hallowed this time, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to be here to discuss matters of our county and people that that make up this great community. We're grateful for the land that we live in, the freedoms we enjoy. We ask you to bless us with the moisture that we need and we're grateful for the moisture that we received. Bless us, we might be able to sustain ourselves enjoy our livelihoods and our lifestyles that we have and we pray for these things. In the name of our son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will go ahead and, and look at approving our minutes and we've got minutes from March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Not all entertain a motion?
I would move to, I would move to approve the minutes of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Second to that motion.
It moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Is this date wrong, John? Two thousand twenty-five, right?
Yes, it is wrong.
Either those minutes are really old or that year long.
Yeah, but you know what? I think I'll just, I can switch this page out. That date's right.
Oh, you got, okay.
Yeah, and that date's right.
Oh, so we're good, okay.
Headliner, good catch.
Uh, we're good. Thanks. And then we'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants.
Make a motion to approve the warrants. Departmental reports.
Claims for payment.
It's the one, it's the line one down with the dates.
Make a motion to approve, for approval for, of all claims for payment from March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five to April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It moved a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. All right. Well, we'll go to, I guess we'll just go to commission reports at this point. Commissioner Robinson, do you want to go?
Sure. I don't have.
Do you want me to go to Mike? Are you ready?
I'm not.
Ready to use my?
I can, I can be ready.
Look at my calendar and see.
It's me, I'm looking at.
It's a long time and a lot went on. Highlights, had a really good meeting with the engineering firm that's putting together the twenty-five year plan for the fairgrounds. There's been a lot of really good input on that and a lot of outside the box thinking into how we can make that better and, and move forward with that. So that's been a really good process. Attended the sheriff's department or the jail construction meetings. Several of those. Had a meeting with Parowan City manager and John and myself and Bruce talking about a land exchange between Parowan City and Iron County. The dump site and the gravel pit out on the north end of Parowan. Moving forward with that and looking into that.
So can you expand on that a little bit? Cause I, Bruce mentioned that to me. Are they looking to take that hill and crush it and expand the landfill?
Expand the landfill.
Is that gonna happen?
And use that material to in, in the road constructions and the materials that we need throughout the county.
That deal's gonna happen.
That, uh, we're looking into it. I, it's looking pretty positive right now.
We were hoping to do acre for acre, so we didn't have to exchange any money. There was some discussion about the usage of the materials and the usage of the materials in the pit that will be used for recharge. And we're just, we're really just trying to work out the details of, of how that's gonna look. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm cutting you off there.
No, you're good.
We left it, Bruce was gonna take a track out. And we've got our twenty-four acre piece and then that fifteen acre piece over here that runs skinny north and south. He was gonna go down just a little ways and, and see what the overburden was for gravel there, kind of inform the decision because so much of, the only thing really, I, I think it's, I think there's a desire to move forward. It's just a question of how, how best to manage the, the gravel situation, the, the materials, so.
Making sure we're both getting the benefit out of it. Then Thursday night of last week, I attended the Farm Bureau meeting. Senator Vickers and Representative Ship took a minute there to talk about the seven bills that the governor vetoed that, that were passed through the House and the Senate. And one that he did veto was the circuit breaker bill, so.
It's been one ninety-seven.
So that stays. Right now, neither one of them felt that there was enough support to get, get a majority vote on that to overrule the governor, so. For right now, that's gonna stay. That's, in a nutshell, that's three weeks of meetings.
So I skip through this and give the highlights as well. I met with, this was an interesting meeting. I met with Luke. Met with Luke, George, and a couple of guys from State Emergency Management.
Yeah.
In regards to our, you know, we, we've gotten awarded all of this FEMA money for the flood damage. But that has to go through the state.
That's for like Hamlin Valley, right?
That's for like Hamlin Valley and, and Goat Springs, yeah, Gold Springs, all the roads.
All that road damage.
All that road damage and stuff. So we had to fight claw and scratch with FEMA to get approved. George is the FEMA whisperer. I think he just, he calls me a lot.
We put whisperer in air quotes?
George is the FEMA threatener. George calls me a lot. Hey boss, I might be in trouble. What'd you say, George? Anyway.
All the lists.
But long story short, we went from nothing to like seventeen thousand dollars to like three hundred thousand dollars. Thank you, George. But then it comes to the state and the, and then the, the state's being difficult. So we had an in-person meeting. And I, I hope we got all that worked out, but it, again, thank you, George.
That's awesome.
So, uh, yeah, but, but so I, I think we're on the way to getting that money released to, to get those fix-it projects done on those roads. We had a a listening session with Department of, Department of Health, Department of EMS. Talking about issues with EMS. You know, the county doesn't run EMS, but we do have a really close relationship with with Gold Cross. We had, and I had no idea this bill was even in the legislature, but we had some predatory practices going on in Iron County that ultimately resulted in one helicopter company pulling out. We actually made a, Sam and George and I traveled to Salt Lake last year and had a conversation with Darren Bushman, who's now the director of EMS. Apparently, and we didn't know this, they launched an investigation into that and there was actually some legislation passed this go around to prevent that kind of behavior, so. I didn't even know there was legislation. We would have followed that a little closer, but that was cool. I met with Brett Hauser and Danny Benson from Brianhead to talk some fire issues. That's, that's an ongoing discussion. There's different stuff that nobody cares about, little things here and there. Jail. Airport board. Again, upcoming ribbon cutting for the new terminal. I don't have a date on that quite yet. Also approved some leased space there. It's about it. Those are the highlights.
Okay. I can jump back in. Two other things that I alleviated to put in there. When he said George, that triggered the memory that, that Noah has declared a drought situation in, in Utah and so I'd been in communication with the Department of Agriculture Director for the state of Utah. He says the state is not ready to do that, but he said it is getting very close to doing that and that will release some funding to help out guys that are hauling water and, and feed the livestock and help out in those scenarios. And then also I met with, with Amber, the department, the weed department. Looking at the situation that she's in and trying to give her a space to call home and, and store and maintain her equipment and be out of everybody's way and quit getting ping ponged around. And so I met with Terry and looking at expanding the fleet building. Tried to involve everybody that I could think in, think of to make sure we weren't stepping on any toes and it seems like it everybody's on board, so Amber's pursuing funding for that, so let's see what we can do.
Ken, I was thinking about that. Rather than do a full-blown addition on a block and roof and everything, I'm, I'm also wondering if you could go up on that north just some kind of a lean to, just kind of a sloped roof and then frame it in. You know, and then insulate it and heat it. I mean, it, that'd be a lot cheaper than doing a full-blown addition.
Go and clear out.
Yeah, I don't know. Might, that might be.
Terry's looking into what it would take to do all that.
Yeah, I met with Terry on that as well. Terry said I'm gonna, Terry said I'll go figure out the options, look at, look at the different options, but that's, I'll mention that to him.
It might be way cheaper.
Just if there's a, yeah.
Go up high, just do a lean to with some, and then just, you know, enclose it and put a garage door on it and pour some concrete and probably be way cheaper than doing a full-blown addition. I don't know. Something to think about.
Yeah.
Terry, yeah. Terry will figure it out.
You good?
Yep.
I, so it's been a, probably a month ago, our planner Reed Erickson, Erickson sent us a letter regarding the Union Pacific Railroad. They're, they're, I guess they used to have a well every so often along the railroad for their steam engines back in the day. And so there's, there's, and, and the union, and I, I've worked with Union Pacific on this jail, on the railroad crossing with our sewer line. And so I've had some contact numbers. I made a few calls, made a lot of calls actually. And I finally got ahold of Rod Carroll. He's over the real estate division of the Union Pacific Railroad. They don't want to be in the water business anymore. They wanna, and, and I don't blame them. They, they want to come in and cap these wells and get rid of them because there's, but here's the challenge is Modena has seven homes on that well. The, the actual infrastructure where they piped the water to the homes has crumbled. It's no longer feasible. So they simply turn on the pump and it's really good quality water. I guess it's been tested, some of the best in the state, but they turn on the pump. They fill their, their water tanks, haul it to their homes and then they pump it into their, their homes for culinary use only. And the other thing is, there's a gentleman out there by the name of John, I don't, didn't bring my notes, but he's, he's been there a long, long time, knows the history. And he uses that to fill a little fire truck they have out there in Modena in case they have a fire. And so he uses that for that, so. I talked to Rod Carroll from Union Pacific, super nice guy. He said, and I said, is there any way, Rod, we could work something out so we don't have to, you know, cap that well so that these people can continue to use water? And he said, Paul, there's a, there's a weird act from like eighteen twenty-eight where Congress passed, passed an act and John, I, I'll get you the exact language. I've, I don't know if I took a picture of my notes. I can't remember. I forgot to bring them this morning, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's an act where the railroad can deed a road to a county or the state. And it's, it's an act of nineteen twenty-eight and so what they would do is they'd carve out a road off of, it actually comes off Modena. It's a state highway. And the well's right off that, so they'd, they'd do a road off of the state highway and there just happened to be a well in the middle of the road. And so I talked to, I talked to Chad or, or Sam Woodall. He felt like we could as a county take possession of that land and own the well, but we would write up an agreement with the, the ones that use that saying we're not responsible for, cause there's no water rights for that well. In fact, the well doesn't even show up on the state's website. It's, it's, it was drilled in like nineteen forty.
Just kind of punched it for the train.
They punched it for the train. There's no water rights in it. They didn't use a lot of water just for the train and there's no water rights and so, so I've kind of, and when I drove out there Saturday and I met with the townsfolk, there was probably six or seven people there visiting, nice people. But they're using that water and, and I kind of told them what was going on and I said, we'd have to sign an agreement with them that says we're not responsible for the quality of the water, the maintenance, the water rights and the power. They would have to take care of, be like a net, net, net lease. They, we had owned the well, but they'd have to take over all the expenses. And they're excited about that. And so we're working through that. The, the challenge is, is who do we sign an agreement with? There used to be a Modena Waters, Water Users Association, but it's kind of defunct. You have to have eight homes to make a public water system and they've got seven, so they kind of fell under that regulation. So the, so the, so the, the thing kind of went defunct. And so we, I don't know how big of a pain this would be, but we would probably have to basically sign an agreement with each user, I would imagine. And Sam felt like we could do that and, and they were really excited that we would maybe be able to do that for them. I mean, I don't know. It'd be awful to be, to have your shut, house shut off of water. I don't care how many homes there are, but it'd be devastating to those people. And so, and then I drove, I've, I talked to the commissioner, former commissioner Wood and asked her, I said, Marilyn, is there the same situation in Lund? She said, yes. She said, I think there's five homes on the well in Lund. And so I talked to Rod about that. I, I drove over to Lund after I got done at Modena with that meeting. And I, there was, like she said, there's about, seems like there's about five homes and I, I assume there's a functioning water system because I found the, it's that old block building that's right there by the tracks. And the north end of that building is where the, must be where the well is, but it was locked up tight. I couldn't get in to see it. And so I took pictures for Rod because he wanted me to take pictures of, of what was going on, so. I looked at it. But it, like in Modena, they have a, you know, a, a, a pipe coming out with a, you know, a downspout to fill up things, but they didn't have that there. So I assumed there must be functioning pipes, but if it was a, it was a different situation in Lund than it was in Modena because those people were really engaged and they came out and talked to me. And, but in, in Lund, it was a different deal, Mike.
Every time I've ever gone through Lund, people are like.
Well, I, I actually knocked on a few doors to see if I could talk.
If I've seen anybody.
There were cars there, there were four-wheelers, nobody would answer the door. I don't know if, I didn't, I didn't have a suit and tie on. I mean, but anyway, they didn't answer the door, so I don't know. I kind of wonder if we want to mess with that one. I don't know. I, I don't, because if they, I, I don't know.
We, well, what we could do if we wanted to be, if we wanted to be a little more proactive is, I mean, they might not answer the door, but we could send them a letter.
Right.
Figure out.
You have their addresses, right?
Yeah, the mailing address.
So maybe you could help me with that, John. Send them a letter, say, hey, I'll, cause I'll bet they got a letter from Union Pacific, but I'll bet it went somewhere into space where nobody saw it. But they probably don't know their water's gonna be shut off in sixty days, so.
Well, that's, that's a big deal for them.
Big deal.
Yeah.
And so you know, Rod's working on going through the motions of, of transferring that to the county. I just don't want it to become a liability for the county or a super big headache, but I did talk to Paul Monroe about, he's the CEO of the Water Conservancy District and he said, that's outside of our boundary. And the other thing is the state of Utah has now, and I'm going on because we've got time, but, but the state of Utah, I guess they used to have to do water testing on the water systems like twice a month and now they have to do it like three times a week. So they, he's had to hire a full-time guy just to go around and do water tests on all the systems they have. And it's, it's, it's a kind of an unfounded mandate that we, that we have to do now. And so if they took over those systems, they'd be driving out to Modena and Lund three times a week just to test their water and so that'd be cumbersome, so.
Well, where the one is seven and the one is five homes.
So.
And maybe we could, maybe we could come up with legalese that said something like successor, successors and/or assigns or something like that so that we could get it established. And then if we needed to, we could have like a, an escape clause for the county.
Right.
To kind of protect us, but to, to not cut the, the water they've been depending on these many decades.
Right. Right. So anyway, we're, I've been working, I've probably made fifty calls on this deal, but it's, it's, I've been, but it was interesting and the railroad is very anxious to get out of the water business and cap all their wells and just be done. But they don't, like Modena for instance, they don't have any water rights in that well, so they'd have to go out on the open market and buy water rights if they can find them and move them, do a, do a pointed diversion into that well to make it legal. And then they'd have to have probably three point, about three point one two five acre feet because you gotta have point four or five per home. The county's ordinance says you have to have one acre foot per home, but I think we've, that last ordinance we passed, I think we defaulted to the state's directive, which is point four five. Isn't that what we did? And so, anyway, that's where we're at on that. I'm, I'm working on that. It's, it's been kind of, kind of interesting, but, but like I said, the Union Pacific, there's, there's Rod Carroll, super nice guy and he want, he's real excited that we have an interest in maybe helping them solve this problem.
Was he able to give us an inside track on our, our easement for the sewer at the other part?
It's almost done.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah, Platten Platts, they, they should have that done. Sure. They promised it last week, but they're, they, they ran, and, and this brings me to the, a good segue to my next, we had a meeting with Platten Platt. We, in my opinion, the height, the elevation we set the gel at is probably the most important decision we make. Because we don't want, you know, there, there has been, and Ken, you'd probably know the history more than, more than maybe Mike, maybe Mike does too, but hasn't there been with IFA, doesn't it, doesn't, isn't there some water that comes down through there periodically?
That's where the drainage runs right there and it, you know, there, there is an outlet that goes underneath the track right now that, that is adequate, but it does pond a little bit.
So we're gonna probably raise the elevation of the gel itself, about probably two and a half to three feet, just to make sure it's plenty high, so we never have water problems with the gel and that's.
Sense to get that out of the way now.
Get it up higher. It, it won't affect the roadways. It's just, it's gonna cost us, and, and the one nice thing is they had a lot of excess material on site and they won't have to haul that away. We'll be able to use every speck of that. And maybe have to rob, not rob, but trade where we, we would take a little bit out of the Cedar City's recharge basin there. Use it, that pit run for, for the pad and then, and then we can trade them for the material at Kitty Hawk or Kitty Hawk Pit. So, so that's, I felt really good about that meeting. The, the parking lot, when they, when they overex the parking lot, it ended up being about an eight percent grade. Which is steeper than is legal for ADA, even though they can do a separate ADA pad, that's, that's okay. But they're gonna try to build that up to probably three to four percent, which helps the pavement drain really fast and good. It doesn't ice up in the winter. You don't have bird baths and it, they can warranty it better. It's, it just, but so three to fours is kind of the sweet spot. But it, and that falls into ADA requirements for wheelchairs and those kind of things when they use it. I had my five county meetings this week. We had a Board of Health and our Steering Committee. One thing that came out in our Board of Health that's, we've been relying on COVID funds that were kind of residual. We, and our director thought those would continue to last for a while, but they cut them off, I think with this Doge stuff. They cut them off, so I think he's had to lay off some employees in the Health Department and, and, and get pretty lean there. The other thing in, in our five county meeting, they have a, they, they wanted us to identify one project that affects five county the most to send to the governor's office to consider help with to, you know, mitigate some problems and what we came up with was really the Zion National Park Reservation System because that's, they're, they're looking to move to a reservation system, which they're afraid these national tour buses and these foreigners will stop coming to Zion National Park and it'll really hurt the attendance. And, and what that does, if they don't come to Zion, they don't come to Bryce Canyon, they don't go to, you know, the Grand Staircase. There's a lot of downstream attractions that won't get tourists to if they don't come to Zion first. So it's a, it's a big deal and so that's, that's the, that's the project that we decided that was probably the most, you know, impacted the most counties in five county. And so we talked about that. I don't know if you guys agree with that. I think, I think, you know, one, one, Jerry Taylor, who's a commissioner in Garfield. He said, he, and it's a worthy cause, but he said, we, we might, we, we mine our dinosaur bones out of Southern Utah and send them out to all these museums all over the world, but we don't have a nice museum for dinosaurs. And he said, I want to someday build a museum in like Escalante or somewhere over there where those dinosaur land is. Where we have dinosaur, you know, remnants and, and build a museum. And so that was, that was one of the ideas, but this, this other one trumped that. Ken talked about jail meetings. I talked about that a little bit. We're, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a moving target, the cost of the jail a little bit. The tariffs are starting to affect us. We're doing our best to buy things in advance before prices go up. But we're gonna, I'm sure we're gonna feel some pain on, on our budget on the jail because of some of the tariff stuffs that's happening. I met with Wade Adams this week. Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company does a commercial fleet program where they buy and sell your vehicles for you. And we had a meeting with two of their representatives this week and it was, it was very interesting and it looked like they could, they have, they have buying power that's as good as state contract pricing. Plus they can sell your cars like that and, and, and they felt like they could get more money than we can. And so that's something Wade's gonna evaluate and see if that's something we want to entertain.
I know that when Dan Jessen proposed that program, he, he mentioned, I don't know if it was Enterprise specifically, but might not hurt to have a conversation with him. He'll, he'll recollect
Oh, okay.
Some of the research that he did, maybe he and Wade could talk it through.
Okay.
I'm sure he'd be willing.
They're a huge company and they do a lot of commerc, they do a lot of this commercial stuff. And so it, it sounded promising. Had a meeting with the DMV in Cedar City, the, some of the Tara and, is it Tara?
Tara.
Tara, Tara. With Tara and, and Chief Adams from the Cedar City Police Department. They, I think they're doing like twelve hundred registrations a day out of that office. It's getting so busy. We're getting a lot of people driving up from Washington County to use our facility because it's faster. And we're about half the size of theirs. I don't quite understand that, but, but.
Better customer service.
Yeah, the, and they're, they do a great job. The, the challenge they have is, and Mike, you'd understand this better than me, but I guess when people come in, if they can't bring their big trailers or boats and stuff they're not supposed to bring back there, the, the police department has to go out and verify the VIN numbers, right? And so we just kind of revisited that because they, they were a little bit frustrated that, anyway, Darren said they did help us and, and make sure we got that taken.
That's something that, I mean, as law enforcement, we've always done. In fact, in Parowan, there's a lot of vehicle trading going around in Parowan, cause I'll bet there's days that I'll do four or five VIN inspections.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. There's rarely a day that goes by, rarely a shift that goes by. We don't do at least one.
How many dog bites you get?
Hardly any.
Oh, that's good.
Thankfully. Yeah, no, there's a ton of VIN inspections. Thankfully. Yeah, no, there's a ton of VIN inspections. And I know that, so I imagine there's a ton of VIN inspections in Cedar.
There's a lot, and I think it's taxing their resources.
Yeah, it, it's, it's tough to, because that's obviously a low priority call. You know, in Parowan, we can get to them really pretty easily, and Enix the same way. Even in the county, we get to them, I think, fairly easily. Cedar City's just got a call volume that probably makes it difficult for them to.
But Darren was very kind, and, and, uh, he does a great job, chief of police there. And, and we appreciate their willingness to help us with that. Because our, 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 our staff doesn't have the time to go out and.
No, and that's the thing, because the people can bring their vehicle in and then they have to go in. But what it entails is look at the actual VIN, verify it by the paperwork, and then run it through NCIC to make sure that it's not stolen.
Got it, got it. So it has to, it has to be law enforcement.
So it has to be law enforcement or a designated, you know, or they, those guys have the authority. They have access to that system as well. But it's, the, the, the volume that they have in their office, it's so much easier on them for law enforcement to do it.
Right.
Um, yeah, I can see where there's, I can see where the, the rub is for sure. But, yeah, so we'll do in Parowan. I'll, I mean, there, there's times that I'll have two or three like at the same time. You're like, where, everybody decided they need a VIN inspection right now?
There is an argument that says, just out of an equity reason, that you ought to be charging a fee for that. And I know that, you know, you're providing good public service, but, you know, you get to like a level where it's interrupting your ability to do other law enforcement. Um, and, you know, we, we did the same thing in the Recorder's Office. You pay a fee to record a document. That's because we don't want all the taxpayers paying for your recording, kind of a thing. And, and so, I don't know, that might help. I, I don't even know if that'd be legal, but that might help the.
The thought, the charge it, charge it.
You know what I know?
Offsite.
I mean, I don't know what Cedar City's staff is now as far as, uh, code enforcement officers.
I think they have two, I think.
But they, they have the ability to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know what.
Well, it might make it easier if they could cap, get a little revenue from it and.
Yeah, exactly.
Pay for those officers a little bit.
You know, help some sort of revenue stream to maybe.
Good thought.
Add another code enforcement officer or something.
That might be a.
Like I just.
I wonder, I, I gotta believe that somebody around the state's doing something like that. I mean.
Right.
We're usually the last when it comes to adding a fee, so.
Yeah, I don't know. So I know, all the other agencies, including the county, I don't think it's an issue. Just for me listening to the radio, it's.
You hear a lot go through.
We're, everybody else is able to get to those. Or if not, you know what, if, if it's busy, you, you can always have a pop-up for the day shift or.
Where it's not critical.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
I know, I know I've had friends who've had to wait three or four days for one in Cedar, but it kind of makes sense.
Yeah.
Last thing I have, attended planning commission, um, it was interesting. There's a, there's a group there, an organization that's looking at a, like a dog sanctuary out by Parowan Gap. It's, uh, it's actually huge, um, talking hundreds of dogs. I don't know if it's kind of like Best Friends. It seems like it's maybe kind of like, like that, that kind of a deal. But, uh, so I attended that. And, um, Dennis Gray got put on as the new planning commission member. He's gonna be great, so we appreciate his service. That's all I have.
Commissioner, can I?
Sure.
Um, so we had, I had the chance to meet with the chiefs, uh, the fire chiefs, um, and, uh, Spencer Rollo. And we, uh, it, it may or may not have had anything to do with the fact that there was brisket involved, but we met in Canaveral and, and, but we, it was kind of a, uh, Spencer's chance to introduce the idea of the, uh, fire study, the fire district feasibility study to the chiefs. Um, and there is a bit of a workload for the chiefs as far as gathering information for the study, number of calls. How does your budget look? What assets do you have? How many employees? What kind of firefighters do you have as far as, you know, part-time, full-time, volunteer? Um, and, uh, so. To say that they were super excited about would be exaggeration, but they, they didn't seem to be too, you know, upset. And, and it was, it was a good chance for us to talk about some of the possible positive things from a fire perspective, you know. We, I mean, we, we, we kind of ended the meeting talking about growth. Um, and I said, you know, you think about like what law enforcement has gone through with growth or building and zoning. You know, there's tremendous amount of pressure on some of these systems that provide these services. And it's, it would be unreasonable to think that that isn't, that also translate to fire. You know, what are our response times, those kind of things? And so, uh, you know, I, it, they seemed, they seemed pretty. I would say, I wasn't gonna, I was gonna say positive, but they were pretty resigned to the fact that it kind of needed to happen. Um, and I, I, I think overall it was a good meeting, and yeah, the brisket was very good.
Well, there's, uh, there's some talk that after some of the fire cancel, the insurance cancellations in California, they're starting to do that up here in the remote areas. They're starting to cancel people's insurance, and so.
Creek and Brian had her having a hard time.
Right.
Getting companies to back them.
So it's.
Our families experienced that with their cabin. They just don't have insurance now.
Wow.
That was part of my discussion when I met with Danny and Brett, talking, that was kind of part of our discussion, that it's gonna be an ongoing discussion. They're looking for some more funding from the county to help them with a full-time position to check that box for unincorporated insurance type things. So I told them that's a, meet with Luke and kind of look at things and see what that need is versus what our budget is, so.
Well, John, I would, I don't know. I mean, do we, do we have, so do we have an agenda like every quarter that's light on reports?
No, it's just.
If we could spread them out, it seems like we've been going long, a lot of them, and it cuts us short. So we can't really talk about some things.
And I, I think, I think we should look into that. We, we generally reserve that first meeting in January for the open meeting training that we do.
Right.
Um, we have to do that every year. Um, but, um, yeah, I think, I think at the very least, this, this meeting, we could maybe spread it around. And we could maybe even change how often people report or, or, you know, some of those, you know, I. Maybe we don't want to hear from every department as often. Uh, so, but maybe what I'll do is put together a couple of ideas for you. Uh, just, that's an administrative thing, so I can just send you an email.
Cause right now, are they quarterly now?
It's quarterly. Yeah. And it's kind of, it's nice from a, from a department head standpoint, because you know you're about that far through the quarter, and you're gonna do it four times a year, so.
Um.
But, yeah.
Back to the gel, they, uh, cornerstone has poured about sixty percent of the pods, and they, they pour these pods in molds. They take them out, they grind them with grinders, make them look pretty, and then they coat them on the inside with epoxy. They install the fixtures, the sinks, the beds, toilet, and they're looking good. It's looking really nice.
Their whole process is really, it's really impressive.
Yep. So, anyway, that's all I have.
All right.
If, uh, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn until our ten o'clock meeting. We'll actually be able to start on time.
We're gonna sign Kerry's books.
I don't know if that's.
That'd be good. Adam?
Let me, I've gotta go. Yeah, well, I gotta, I gotta.
Oh, thank you. Should I just think about that? How are you, my friend?
I'm good.
Here in Perrone.
Yeah.
I will, this, after, I will go back after, this afternoon. Make sure it goes.
You will, I can give you a flash drive too, or something.
I've got a bunch of flash drives. Get it to you today.
It doesn't need to say that. It should be at some point too, I don't know if you're, are you on Wednesday?
Well, I'm ready whenever you are.
Yeah.
Maybe Wednesday then I'll come back.
Great. Good. Go to tacos, or, you know, somewhere.
All right, we'd like to welcome everybody back to our county commission meeting. Appreciate those that have joined us. We'll go ahead and go to agenda item number one, which is a public hearing discussion and possible approval of a proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres, A20 to commercial C for approximately 63.15 acres within the description outlined in the agenda. And this is located near 4,000 south and 5,700 to 6,000 west, Cedar City, Utah. Reed Erickson.
Good morning commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
This is located just off of the south exit 51, uh, the, on the south side of Vandenberg Road. You can see here, uh, it's all private around it and the Paiute tribal lands to the, to the east on the other side of the interstate. The properties adjacent to this are zoned RA 20, which is the pink on the north as in agricultural 20, and then it's adjacent to other commercial on the east side. So they want to extend that commercial, um, zoning just a little bit. It is an 80 acre parcel. We're doing a subdivision of 20 acres to retain that residential use in the part that where the house is. And they can break off 20 acres there and then we'll zone the rest of it, the 63 acres. And, um, it's, uh, pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of, um, question related to this. It's, uh, uh, it's very similar to their other property that's out there in terms of its potential for commercial development. It's right on the interchange there. It has excellent access and exposure. The real challenge with developing commercial there is the water system. It's lacking any kind of, uh, central water or public water system. So they would have to be on private water systems. And that's, uh, fairly limiting when it comes to commercial. There is a potential there for the conservancy district and a couple of wells to turn pri- to public wells. The Paiutes have developed a Pi- a public water system where the Sinclair station is and where their housing is. And they've acquired some additional property there across the street and intend on building some of that out in commercial. But their, their commercial water system is fairly limited to their own property. And they're not, have not been willing to extend that beyond their own property at this point. So I think it's going to require the development of a, a private public water system there to really open that up to commercial. At which point I think we'll see a lot of commercial development there once there's some water system development. So as we, as you are aware, we look at the feasibility of being able to develop something in this zone. We don't have a specific project that we're not, we're not zoning for a particular project. We're looking at what the potential is for that area. And this particular property owner feels like he has great potential there and being able to develop that into commercial. So that's what we're looking at. The planning commission recommended approval for this zone change. And I think we're, unless you have questions about it, we can go to public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. So chair will declare the public hearing open for this agenda item number one. If there's anybody like to speak to this, if you approach the mic and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
The criteria or the considerations that we always look at as we've just discussed is the availability, water, sewer, fire flow, drainage, access, uh, being able to provide services, all of those things. And, and they're as likely there as anywhere when that develops out and the potential I think is there. So I think that it meets that, those considerations. So we're, whoops, I put recommendation to county commission. I should have changed that. It's, I don't know that I got the right one here because that has several things that are wrong on there. But anyway, we're looking at a zone change for the 63.15 acres from A20 to commercial.
All right. Any discussion on this issue? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the zone change from agriculture 20, A20 to commercial C for approximately 63.15 acres within the legal description as provided in the agenda, located near 4,000 south and 5,700 west to 6,000 west in the Cedar City grid.
Second that motion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks Reed. Item number two is a public hearing discussion and possible approval of proposed county code amendment ordinance 2025-5. This is an ordinance of Iron County, Utah to the Iron County Land Use Code, adding chapters or chapter 17.37 and amending section 17.16.030, Table of Uses, and 17.20.010, Definitions, and amending section 16.22.070, Development Standards, allowing smaller than zoning minimum lot parcel sizes for remainder lots, parcels in road dedication subdivisions.
Thank you. That's a mouthful. Appreciate that explanation. What really, we're doing two things with this ordinance. One is we're providing in the ordinance now, the ability for data centers. We did not have that use in our table of uses or our definitions. And we've had quite a bit of interest recently in having data centers and the be, the ability for someone to apply to build a new data center. And this ordinance provides for that by definition, creates this new chapter in the ordinance 17.37, which is very similar to the chapters that we created for solar energy, utility scale, solar, wind and geothermal. We added new chapters that specifically allows for an application to come and, and address the specifics of how those particular uses might impact the surrounding area. And so that's what this ordinance does. It's modeled after those others where we're taking a look at a number of considerations in the application. In this ordinance, it identifies what needs to be in the application and what zoning districts they can be in. So just the example here, or the language out of the ordinance that we're looking at is a data center. And I know that a lot of people are not familiar with data centers and we've never had any data centers in the past. And I'm not sure that I can adequately articulate exactly everything that a data center can do. But essentially it is what we call, you know, everything that we don't know about in the cloud. Everything where something goes and it's stored somewhere else and processed somewhere else and comes back, it goes to a data center essentially. A data center is simply a, a, as identified in this definition, real or personal property that is consisting of buildings or groups of buildings where computers and data is, is transaction processing equipment is held, maintained and operated where information can come into this facility. It can be stored, it can be processed and then sent back out. And what makes us attractive now for data centers where we really haven't been in the past is because of our availability of power. These large power plants that we have of the solar and opportunities for other types of utility scale solar makes it attractive because maybe where they may want a data center larger, closer to a larger metropolitan area. They don't have the ability to bring power to it. And one of the critical components of these data centers is that they need redundant power. They need a lot of redundant power. So they're looking at three or four sources of power. And because we have the Kern River Pipeline right here close, they can get it off natural gas, they can get it off of solar, they can get it out of the grid. Uh, and then they're looking at other opportunities as well. So what we did was we broke out the, the power generation that is associated with a data center as a separate use and a separate definition. And that's what's listed here under B is the, the particular type of power plants that could be associated with a data power plant that, that is built primarily for the purpose of serving that data center rather than just being able to go on the grid like the power plants that we have now. And then the data, the digital infrastructure is the other definition of the identifying the types of things that occur within the data centers. The, the zones that these would be allowed in are the A20 zone, the light industrial and industrial zones. That's where you could hold it, have a data center in the data center power plant. They could not do it in the light industrial zone, but you could do it in the industrial and intensive agricultural zone for the power plants. So, as well as A20. So the, the reference there in 10 is simply the new chapter we've added that it gives the qualifications and the information related to the application and what they need to submit as part of that review. It is a conditional use as we're listing there in all of those zones. So it would be evaluated in terms of potential impacts. And then we identify mitigation to put on that permit so that it can mitigate those foreseeable impacts. So the other thing I didn't mention is what makes us attractive now where we weren't as much for data centers in the past is they don't need the water that they used to need. It used to require a lot of water to cool data centers because they generate a lot of heat and they required evaporative cooling towers. The technology changes that we've seen over the last 10 years with computers and chips and processors require, generate less heat and require less cooling. They're also quieter. And so the impacts that we, we're, we're always associated with large data centers now are not, are a thing of the past. And we're much better situated to be able to handle these kinds of things. They are, they are large. Some of them can be very large and they can generate a lot of tax base. They are very expensive to put in, talking maybe $50 billion for some of these facilities that they're looking at. And so they, there's a couple of companies in the industry that have been working with us to try to get an ordinance in place. They've reviewed this. They've helped generate some of the language in these ordinances so that it accommodates what they need. And then we can still review and, and from a good land use management perspective and standpoint, we can manage these kinds of uses. And I think that we've, we have a good ordinance now. The second component of this ordinance is that because we're doing an ordinance, you know, we're throwing something else in there that we need to change as well. And that is the ability to acquire rights of way, especially for our belt route, but other in other areas. And, and, and our road dedication subdivision had a provision that allowed for the dedication of new roads. But the minimum lots on each side and what was left as remnant pieces also had to meet the minimum for the zoning in the area. This ordinance now has language, and that was what the requirement in the existing ordinance here is that they had to meet the minimum zoning. The new language just adds that in the event that the road dedication of a master planned road results in a remainder lot or parcel that is smaller than the minimum width or area required in the zone, a note shall be placed on the plat recognizing as a legal lot of record, even though it may be smaller. And so a lot of these areas, for example, in the Belt Route are A20, 20 acre lots. And we may have a 20 acre lot that this road goes through and it divides it into a six and a, you know, eight inch parcel of the road taken out of it or six or eight inch acre parcel. And this allows those lots to still be legal lots of record and it doesn't violate our ordinance that, like it did before. And so in a, in a one instance, we had to buy the whole 20 acres because we couldn't split it because, and leave the remnant parcels. Now we can do that. We can sell those remnant parcels. We can provide access for them. We can make it so that it's a little easier to not be in, acquire the rights of way and not be in violation of our own ordinance. And that's what this provision does. Are there any questions about that before we go to the public hearing?
Any questions? Thanks for that explanation Reed. We'll go ahead and chair will declare the public hearing open for the agenda item number two. Everybody's quiet today. We'll, we'll close the public hearing and have you summarize them.
Unless there are questions or discussion, I think we're ready to approve the ordinance.
Okay. Retain a motion.
Make the motion to approve. Code Amendment Ordinance 2025-5, an ordinance of Iron County, Utah to Iron County Land Use Code with the following description that's contained in the agenda.
And I will mention that the planning commission did recommend approval of this ordinance as well.
Great. I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now convene as Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency. John, do we have to have a motion do that or we just state it? We do? Do we have to have a motion to? Just declare, okay. And we'll go to agenda item number three, which is a public hearing on the draft amendment project area plan for the Iron Springs Community Development Project Area. Adam Long, thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. I'm Adam Long. I'm outside legal counsel for the Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency. So today, this item on the agenda, and I apologize for the jumping back and forth between entities to make the agenda work in the order it's supposed to. Uh, what we have here is a proposal to add some land to the existing Iron Springs Solar Project Area. And this project area is created roughly 10 years ago. This is a solar project that's been developed and is operating. The, the county and the other tax entities agreed to, we call it participate, essentially offer some of the tax increment generated by this project to the agency, which then turned out and offered most of that as an incentive to make the project happen. Uh, so the solar project exists, is operating. The proposal here is to add a parcel of 160 acres that would accommodate a planned battery storage project. So this is a, a utility scale battery facility. For the board, board members that were here in November, we addressed the same issue with three other project areas. Uh, these are all owned by the same renewable energy company. Those project areas also had battery storage projects they were developing. That all happened within the boundaries of the existing project area. So we didn't have the formal action of amending the, holding this public hearing, amending the project area plan, doing revised agreements. Because this one is proposing to add land to the project area to accommodate the battery storage facility. We have a public hearing on the amended project area plan, essentially changing the boundaries of the project area to accommodate where the batteries would go. Um, I'm happy to go into sort of the rest of the items on the agenda now, or if we want to take those later, whatever's most convenient.
We can just take them as they come, I guess.
I can say, and we do have some folks waiting for their turn.
I have a lot of people here for this, this agenda item. We could, is that okay to go ahead and just have them talk about?
No, there's other people for other.
What do you?
Oh, I was just saying, maybe we, we could go ahead and with that cursory explanation, maybe you could move forward so that some of these other folks could have their agenda item and then we can talk about it ad nauseam later.
Oh, I, okay. I thought he meant something else. I didn't understand.
Sorry, no.
Right. Okay.
So we'll. I mean, but, but I mean, wouldn't, I would not say, don't, you know, don't talk about it thoroughly. I'm just.
And, and that, that works fine for me. I'm happy to answer questions or step back and let the board open.
So this, this particular extension does not automatically have the same agreements. It's, it's going to be a new, new, new agreement.
Yeah, yes. So this is, this is a situation where the agency could have either created a new project area for this particular parcel or expanded the existing project area. It's essentially sixes from a, from a legal perspective with, in consultation with county officials. We decided it was easier to extend it rather than do a new project area. But yeah, the, the agreements, the sharing of tax increment and the payment of any sort of tax incentive or abatement to the battery project is all, all starting from scratch.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this draft amended, uh, project area. If anybody'd like to speak to this, approach the mic and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and, um, we will reconvene as the Iron County Commission and go to public comments. And this is a time where you can approach the mic, state your name. You have three minutes to discuss, uh, what you'd like and be nice. Seeing none, we will move on to agenda item number five, discussion of possible approval of a request for funding from the transient room tax and TRCC restaurant tax to help pay for SUU athletic facility projects to benefit future sport tourism. Maria Twitchell.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I will have Doug and John come up here shortly, but I just wanted to kind of introduce what we're trying to do here. So the tourism tax boards, I mean, TRT and restaurant tax boards have been prior, toward prioritizing larger scale projects utilizing coming from the tax revenues to, uh, improve and provide an opportunity for more economic development here in Iron County, particularly in the wintertime where we don't have as much going on here in Cedar City. Bryanhead is great, but a lot of that commerce takes place in Bryanhead and doesn't necessarily translate down here into like Cedar City and Parwan. So we are looking for opportunities to, um, develop and invest in larger projects. And you saw that last year when we invested in the Cross Hollows Event Center with a million dollar gift to, towards that expansion. And now I'm going to present, have SUU present a project kind of along those lines. So I'm going to turn this time over to Doug and John and then I'll come back with the recommendation that came from both the TRT and the restaurant tax boards. So thanks.
Thank you. Should have a presentation. I don't know if you have it in front of you. Good morning. Good morning. I've got the old fashioned printed, printed version if you'd like.
I didn't expect a Word document.
It's a PowerPoint. How do you get this on your screen? Push that button.
Is that what you anticipated or no?
No, it's a PowerPoint presentation. It's a leak.
It's a leak?
Yeah, I think it's a leak.
I'm sure enough. All right.
It's really pretty. One more time.
I've got it. I'm just.
Ah, yes. Give it a minute. There you go. You'll drive. Enough right there. Perfect.
My clicker is in my computer bag at home, so you'll have to say beep.
I'll just do this.
Okay.
All right. Good morning commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to, to share a little more information about these projects. Doug Newth, I'm the director of athletics at Southern Utah University. And my colleague here, John Oglesby is the executive director of Utah Summer Games. The, we're, we're here on behalf of our president, Mindy Benson. And in her directive and her vision to make SUU, Cedar City, Iron County, the, uh, the focal point, the destination, if you will, for all. Her interest is academics, arts, theater, and obviously sports tourism, which we'll talk about more today. We think these projects bring a lot of opportunity to Cedar City and to Iron County. And there's three parts to this puzzle, right? The first is tied into what we believe is the gem of Southern Utah, which is what we call the America First Event Center, but what you kind of, people have been here and gone to school here, call the Centrum. And if you can just go to the next page here, I think that, all right, so the Centrum is the host to major events throughout the year and it's primarily men's and women's basketball, gymnastics and volleyball. But we also host graduations and concerts and high school basketball championships and drill team championships and all kinds of things. One of the things that John will talk about here in a second is there's demand. There's demand for more use of that building and, and we think there's a lot of untapped demand. One of the challenges we have though is that building, there's obviously conflict of time schedules, right? We have our men's and women's basketball teams and volleyball teams that practice and compete in there. And so for us to open up more space, more time in that building, we want to renovate a, an old gym. In fact, the folks that went to school at SUU refer to the multipurpose center gym. It's been the old gym for a long time. It hasn't been renovated in decades, maybe. And so if you go to the next page, all right, so this is, this is what, this is what it looks like today and probably what it looked like 20 years ago or maybe 30 years ago. So the next slide will show you what, what we think it'll look like as creating a two court scenario in there. And it's a renovation. It's not a new build. It's not a knockdown. It's a, it's a facelift of that space to build in a basketball volleyball practice facility. That's a division one standard that's most schools have these days. And if we have this space renovated, it opens up all kinds of opportunities to use the Centrum for more non-athletic or non-SU athletic events, which we think would be really important. There is a trickle down impact, right? So, so there are a number, this is a multipurpose center. It is used by a lot of folks, not just our men's and women's basketball and volleyball teams. It's used by our softball and soccer and track teams for indoor practice in the winter. It's used by dance classes and other classes in there. So, so we've got to figure out a way to sort of provide opportunity for those folks too. And so the, the next slide is a new field.
Sorry. I just had a question. Is that a new floor or are they just going to stand and refinish what they got?
New floor. Yeah, that, that floor that's in there today, I think is the same one that was in there 30 years ago. Yeah, so it's a new floor and it's, and again, facelift. It's new floor, new baskets, some new lighting. It's not a huge, huge expensive project, but it'll be a really nice project. The next, the next phase of this is to move the soccer softball track elements to a new field. And this is an outdoor field. Right now, that's a grass surface. And as you all know, there's more than half the year where it's either frozen, snow covered or melting, right? It's sort of mud season where you can't use it, otherwise you destroy the grass. So we're going to, we're going to turf it. We're going to put a synthetic surface on there. So it'll be a year round, multipurpose, multi-use field for softball. And then we'll also do soccer, we'll also do a softball field. Great timing. But we'll also do the softball field the same. Right now, our softball field is grass and dirt like, like every softball field you've seen and most high schools in the region. And we're going to turf it. We'll turf the entire thing infield and outfield. So it'll be used throughout the winter months and into the spring. You can plow it when it snows and play on it the same day.
I have to give you a hard time. So you're, you're going to put a softball field where we used to have a baseball field?
That's correct.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you picked it out. So, so we'll have a multi-use season, year-round use softball field there, which I think could be a big deal for our team, but also I think for local high school teams to be able to use that throughout the winter. And then this is the big one, right? So that new soccer field, we want to put a dome over it. We want to put an air supported structure over it. Most people refer to that as a bubble. In fact, it's just an enormous air supported bubble. If you go to the next one, you can see some pictures of what it might look like on the inside as well. You can go to the next one. All right. So this space, as you can imagine, it's a full-size indoor soccer field. It's a huge indoor space. And again, really important for our teams for indoor practice during the cold winter months from late November through about end of March. But I think really importantly for our community, there's an opportunity for our youth sports, right?
How much of an opportunity?
In terms of?
Time.
Time? Well, here's, here's the interesting is, is our teams, the semester ends in late November, early December, they go home, they go away through the, most of the winter months until mid-January. So we'll have lots of time to share that space through sort of the darker periods when our university students are away. There'll be opportunity for summer games activities, high school activities. John will talk a lot about that. There's a lot of desire and a lot of demand to have more indoor space. So, so that's, that's three or four months where it'll be covered. Then the rest of the year, it'll be a regular outdoor field. So it's a pretty neat opportunity. And this is something that we've talked about in this university for a long, long time and in this community, is having a space for not only our teams to practice when the weather is not great, but for youth sports and adult sports and everything else to be, have an indoor space in the winter time, which I think is going to be incredible. So there's a lot that goes into this proposal. There's a partnership that we're talking about here. So you have, there's some state money in these three projects. There's university money in these projects. And if the county decides to support it, then I think all three of these projects can get, can get done in relatively short amount of time. And we'll have a great opportunity to share the Centrum more often. We'll have a great opportunity to share outdoor field space, softball, soccer more often. We'll have an indoor facility for the first time ever in our university and I think maybe even in Cedar City. So I think it's a pretty neat project. And like I said, there's a lot of partners involved and I think it'll impact a lot of people. So John, do you want to say a few words about?
Just a question. Do they, that dome, the air dome, do they heat, how do they, do they heat that?
Yes, it is heated.
How's it heated?
Yeah, it's a, well, it's air, air supported. So there's fans that blow throughout the, you know, 24/7 when it, when it's up. And then there are heating elements and it blows hot air in as well.
So they just, they just put it up when they need it and?
Yep. And it's, the ceiling is, it's an opaque clear ceiling. So you actually get sun during the day. It lights it and heats it during the day. And it's not, I mean, if you're there at midnight at night, it's probably cooling down a little bit, but most of the time it's 55, 60 degrees throughout the winter, which is great if you're, if you're playing sports, if you're sitting there watching, if you're a parent watching, it might be chilly, but.
Wind.
Yeah, no wind.
It's like a greenhouse. You're collecting all that heat.
Like an enormous greenhouse, yeah.
So when you take it down, do you roll it up and put it away?
Exactly right. Yeah, you, you put it up in, in late November and you take it down at the end of March and it literally rolls up, folds up and then you, and you store it away for the, for the summer. So.
A massive undertaking.
It is.
What's the life expectancy of that?
They're about 40 years now. Yeah, so it's a, I grew up playing. I played tennis as a kid in a bubble like this and every fall we'd put it up and spring we'd take it down. The whole city would come out. We'd all volunteer our time and it was an undertaking. And back in those days, the bubbles weren't, the technology wasn't very good, but nowadays they're, they're very durable, long lasting, they're translucent. So the lighting and heating costs aren't too bad and general operating's not too bad. So.
You know, you look out over Utah County, I was just driving home on Friday, sure enough, there's a couple of bubbles around.
Yeah. Utah Valley has one right on the side of the freeway and I think on the, on the west side of the freeway when you drive by, yeah. So they're not an unusual thing. When you see it, it'll look like a big marshmallow in the middle of our campus, but it's a, it's a pretty useful product. It's, it's an inexpensive way to create indoor space. It's pretty useful. John?
Well, thank you so much, Maria and Doug, Commissioner Robinson, Commissioner Cousins, Commissioner Blake, it's, as well as everyone else. It's good to see you this morning. It's an honor to be here today to talk a little bit about this project. And coming from a summer games piece, which is kind of the bridge that connects the university with a lot of our sports tourism and promotion of commerce in the county, right now is a very unique time in our county. It's a fun time for sure. And what Maria talked about, what Doug talked about, is we are seeing a lot of demand for folks wanting to do business, particularly in sports tourism in our county, and a lot of demanding of wanting to hold large scale events in the winter months, particularly in Cedar City and surrounding areas. Want to go through a couple of different components of this that I think are very beneficial and I'll kind of go through each facility, if you will. The first on the multipurpose center renovation, which opens up more dates in the America First Event Center Centrum space. To be frank, we have offers as a campus right now for this academic year, if we could accommodate it, to have a state wrestling tournament, a state cheer championship and two state basketball tournaments. It's very hard for us in our current setup from a facility perspective to be able to accommodate that. But I think that demonstrates the interest that in particular the High School Activities Association and other partners have in hosting events at SUU with our work through the summer games and then in the county. That, that's a, that's a large scale commitment of events that if we had the facility space and the time that they would bring. I think the second piece as well is having that facility space again allows us to get very creative, both in events that we're trying to go out and bring to the county to bring a positive economic impact, but it also allows us to reposition events that we currently have in the summer games portfolio, that we're doing in events where they're nowhere near as successful as they could be if we were able to reposition them to other months of the year where they, I believe, would have an ability to see exponential growth, which leads to an exponential growth in TRT. I think the, that project alone is transformational for what we can do from a purely sports tourism standpoint. I think as you move into the bubble, as well as the turf field, I think what that allows us to do is to see an investment in our community and our university, but also on the business side as well. I think the bubble and the field, from a summer games perspective, I know we're increasingly adding events, whether it's seven-on-seven football, girls' flag football, Special Olympics this summer, having a high quality turf field, which is easy to basically run a lot of different events on and to be able to flip day after day after day to accommodate different events. That's a, that's a huge business advantage for us, no doubt, and being able to continue to pursue business. And then I think back to Commissioner Robinson's question about the bubble. That's important not only from a university standpoint for our athletic teams, it's important as well from a sports tourism standpoint. I think what's really fun is something that is kind of the qualitative bit here, is to see the impact of, of youth sports teams that are able to practice in there in the, the winter months, of kids that are able to see opportunity, not just college kids, but youth kids, adults, active, healthy lifestyles in the county, that they're going to be able to use that space and be able to continue getting out, staying active in the winter months, and in many cases, sometimes not needing to travel outside of the county to get some of those opportunities. I think anytime you have a portfolio of facilities and assets, I think it allows someone like me to be able to get more creative in terms of the types of events that we go out and try to pursue. And I think that that is something that, that really makes a positive impact. I think on the softball project as well, again, I think our county is definitely being viewed as a site where people want to begin hosting a variety of other events, spring state championship events as well. And I think as we continue to build out the other assets, I think this softball field is a good chance for us to have an impact again on the university perspective. I think it allows local high school programs and regional high school programs to have a facility that they're able to use throughout the year, working around the university space to be able to just have better practice venues and even game venues potentially. And then I think it is, no doubt, we would use it during summer games and then use it as an asset to be able to sell in other sports tourism opportunities. So with that.
Has there been, has there been any thought about city rec or is that, would that be available for city rec? I know that they've, they've struggled to have enough places for what they do.
I think with the, that's a great question, John. I think of the build out definitely of this facility, I think it's bringing them, once we're able to start moving forward with the project, into the conversation of what does the usage look like? How would you use it? When could we try to structure that? I think the Commissioner Robinson's question is, this is not a, you know, a gated facility in the sense is, is understanding that there's an investment from the public into the facility is trying to make sure that we're trying to manage the needs of the university and the needs of the public as much as we can to make that a responsible investment.
Those would be my major concerns is, okay, you're asking for us to donate money to facilitate this project. You're asking for a commitment from us. What commitment are we getting from the university to have that accessible to the community?
And I.
Who's going to be in charge of scheduling so that they can't say, well, the university has priority over this, so you can't bring your groups in here. So that's, that's my concern.
I think that's a valid question, Commissioner Robinson, and a responsible one for sure. I think, going back to Doug's point, I think President Benson wasn't able to be here today, but there's no doubt that this is a, a very, a point of emphasis for her to make sure that that investment in the university is reciprocated, to be able to be available as much as possible for outside groups. I think here today, how, who's going to be in charge of scheduling it, how it's going to be scheduled, no doubt, some of those things still need to be worked together. But I think coming from the president, coming from Doug and then coming from myself in my capacity, is, is it's no doubt a multi-use facility in terms of not just university events, but the community and sports tourism and then finding a way to responsibly co-mingle all those together so it's a positive outcome.
So you're kicking the can down the road. There's not an answer to that and I get that, but.
I don't know that, I, I would respond to that saying that I think as we move forward that this is an active partnership. And because of that investment, I think that we're going to remain in communication with partners to ensure that we're doing it in a responsible way.
Just in terms of where we are on student use, as I said before, there's, there's a, there's a good block of time in the winter months when the students are gone, like the university's empty. And I think that time of the year, it'll be wide open for all kinds of community use, different teams and activities and summer games and, but, but again, from, I don't know what that timeframe is, but mid-December through mid-January for sure, that space will be wide open for all kinds of activities.
Hey Doug, could you talk about when, we talked about this before in our, in previous meetings, but when does the university, when do athletic teams generally practice? Like time for like in a day? When are the, when are, you know what I'm saying?
That's a good point. And most people don't always know this, but we schedule our practices around classes so they can go to class. But we practice in the mornings generally. So we're there from 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM till noon, 1 o'clock. And then most afternoons, our teams are in class in the evening. So, so afternoons, evenings, it's open to, to other users, other potential, potentially users. So if we're just talking about the indoor facility.
Right.
Yeah. So it's, there's, there'll be, there'll be a fair amount of open time for sure and.
And who would dictate when that is available?
Well, that, I mean, it's our, our scheduling, I guess. We have campus scheduling that does a lot of events and activities throughout campus and we'll have to figure out with them how to manage that and see what the demands are from the community as well.
They'll be huge.
Yeah. I think it'd be awesome, right?
What's the overall, is this one project, the renovation of the basketball arena and the, and what is the total cost and how much are we contributing?
It's about, we're estimating 6.1 million right now, all in. And as I said before, the state and the university are putting money in a little more than half of that and we've asked the county for 2.75.
So this is a multi-year commitment from us.
I think Maria will be able to speak to that.
Yeah, could you come up, Maria, and clarify the funding?
Yes.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
So our two boards have met, they met on March 19th to, to approve a recommendation, a positive recommendation towards this project. And so they approved 2.75 million dollars, which $500,000 would go towards the multipurpose renovation, 250,000 towards softball field reconstruction, and then 2 million towards the synthetic surface field and structure of the bubble. And so.
One year or is that a multiple year?
It's going to be multiple years. If you look at the bottom of this. So what we would do is we would take $750,000 out of each fund for a one-time contribution and that would come from the fund balance. So over the years, the money has built up that we haven't spent. And so it was put aside, we've been putting it aside with the idea that we would put it towards a more major infrastructure project. We had talked about a convention center. We've been talking about many things, but we're starting to see the, the need for sports tourism. And so the, the two boards were like, why don't we go ahead and take from the fund balance, you know, to get this project started? And then the remainder, which is 625,000 from each fund, we would pay that, we'd budget which is $625,000 from each fund, we would pay that, we'd budget that for three years. So it would be a payment of $208,000 plus little change for three years. So we'd start that in 2026. In that timeframe, we'll, of course, we won't move forward with anything without, you know, an MOU and an understanding as to how the community and how sports tourism will play a part and have priority in those facilities. We want to make sure that our investment is sound and that it's doing what we're investing in, which is bringing back into those two funds. So I anticipate that the one-time funding coming from the fund balance would probably be in 2026 as well. So, but we can work that out. It does, just taking that money out of there, we still have funds in that fund. So it'll be about, there's about 2 million that will be left in TRT and about 1.45 in restaurant tax. So-
Does that have earmarks for other projects, or?
There is definitely some plots towards where we can put that money. We have been talking, you know, we've been talking about the fairground building and its future expansion. But that's, you know, of course, in its master plan, and so we have not seen what that project's going to be. And we know that there's a possibility of more funding coming in through restaurant tax, because they now are now, due to legislation that passed this year, we're going to be collecting from grocery stores and from convenience stores. So there should be some additional dollars coming in through that. I just want to say though, like, we've had a great, having John Nogelsby with the Utah Summer Games, and now having Doug over athletics, the possibilities are just, they just seem almost endless. There, here is a relationship and a partnership that we have not had in the past. And we have people who are, you know, we can get them out of first gear and let them go and really start to generate, you know, projects and events that are going to actually bring people to our county. And that's a big deal. And to have that coming at a time when we need the business here in Iron County, that's even better. So I just, I really appreciate their partnership and their, you know, the fact that we've been able to sit down and have open dialogue and think about projects and think about a bigger vision. I think that's an amazing place to be at this time. So I'm really looking forward to seeing if we can make this happen.
So Maria, we're looking at one and a half million dollar payment now, and then one, 1.25 million over three years.
Yeah.
Incremental.
Incremental.
I just, I'll comment a little bit. So we've, I've been involved in this conversation now for a few months. Maria and John and Doug, and I remember if Mindy was-
Mindy was there.
Mindy was there. I was like, I think Mindy was there in that initial meeting. Well, the initial meeting, we really talked ad nauseam about the benefit to Iron County, the benefit to tourism, and we really hit that scheduling question. That's really kind of the linchpin of the project that benefits Iron County, is having, being able to schedule those events. You know, one thing is, I've, I've sat on, I've been on those boards, both TRT and TRCC since 2017, and have seen the change with Utah Summer Games and both with the university. We are light years ahead in those relationships, and we're actually seeing return on investment now with Summer Games because of John. Doug coming in as the athletic director has been a game changer as well, as far as our relationship with the athletic department at SUU and the cooperation that we have in those facilities is just, it's been exponential. I don't know, you know, we talked a little bit about the high school mountain bike races, mountain bike, you know, that's, there's other, there are a lot of other events that John has either been able to bring in as part of the Utah Summer Games, or there are several events that we've lost out on because we didn't have the infrastructure to host those events. I think, is that, that's fair to say, isn't it?
Scheduling availability.
Scheduling availability. But Maria, could you just, I mean, maybe, I'll put you on the spot a little bit, but just touch on the, the actual economic impact and what we've seen with TRT and TRCC after, you know, from John moving forward. Give John a lot of credit. I give John a lot of credit anytime anybody asks. He'll kind of be the last guy to toot his own horn, but-
Well, I mean-
Amazing.
We're able to see that there, we're, you know, able to push the needle and, and things are starting to happen in terms of, you know, TRT and restaurant tax collection over, you know, the last two years. So like TRT ended up last year 11% overlap, over the year before. Well, a lot of that I can draw towards what John's been doing. When you look at how much a person, a participant spends per day, which is about $147, it adds up, you know? Even though John doesn't have anything to do with NICA, with the high school mountain bike race, it's still an event that's down, even at a time when we really need the business. And it has a 1 point, you know, 1.3 million dollar economic impact because of all the spending. So, you know, we knew when the, what was it, the football, when the football team was here in November, it came in November, we were able to see that it had quite a bit of an impact with our lodgers and with our restaurants. I mean, we can see it immediately. So we know that when you look at, like, we're looking at sports teams, meaning it's not one person, it's a team and all of their followers. It turns into 1,200 or, you know, a couple thousand of people, you know, really making an impact on what's going on in our town. So if we can have that happening in the wintertime, thank goodness, you know? That's what we need. We also need to be competitive. There are a lot of places that are investing in their sports tourism and their infrastructure. We have a history, thank you, thank you to Summer Games and Dr. Lunt, of being really good at hosting events. But we have to have the infrastructure to keep the momentum going. This is a great partnership for us. And then the best part, I think, is that we don't have to maintain it. We, we spend a lot of time thinking about the, you know, the O&M of facilities, and we don't have to take care of that. Once that investment's been made, it's up to the university, and they have to take care of it. And they, and we know that they are good stewards. And so we've seen that with the Shakespeare Festival and all that we've invested there, and we know that they're good stewards with those dollars. So I think this is honestly a win-win for all of us.
I just want to kind of touch on the dynamic of the, of the two boards, TRT and TRCC. Those are really smart people that, that actually, you know, come from the restaurant and the hotel industry, and they are not pushovers. They are, there, there's not a lot of, I'm not going to say pushback, but there, this was-
They ask the same questions.
They ask the same questions, and deeper questions. And both of those boards were satisfied in a positive recommendation for this funding, which there are a lot of projects that come through those boards every year that don't get funded or get minimally funded. You know, this, this was a positive recommendation from both of those boards for this funding that, you know, was not taken lightly. It's been, it's really been a process that I've been really proud of everybody involved to, to see it this far, because I think it really is a game changer for us.
And Commissioner Robinson, I, I agree. We need to make sure that the county and the community has access to-
Right.
-all of this. And that is with us doing a very good MOU and having those conversations. But we just, we wanted to get this before you, so we could get the ball running, so we're not too far behind. And then, you know, let's get the ball running and we'll work this out and make sure everybody's satisfied.
Yeah. No, it's a very exciting project, and I'm, I'm in favor of it as long as it's open to those that are contributing to it.
Yeah. And we had, we've had lots of conversations of, we're going to make sure that those MOUs are very specific and very, very well, well-spelled out to benefit everybody involved, including the taxpayers, because it's all taxpayer money at the end of the day.
And I would push back a little on, on that notion, because I agree, except for the fact that I can't go take my frisbee and play frisbee at the Diamond Z whenever I feel like it either. I mean, part of, part of, part of what we talk about is-
Yeah?
Well, Scott might hurt me. I don't know. I could. Doing barrel races, I might take my chance. But, but the point is, like, Diamond Z is a good example of what I'm talking about. It's very successful, but that means it's booked all the time.
It's booked all the time.
And, and best-case scenario might be that City Rec doesn't get as, get to be on there a whole lot, or they-
Right, right, because it's being used for larger, larger events.
But I really like the idea that it be community-centric. You know, I live, Maria and I live by the university, and, and there's been, there's been some hard things over the years that have kind of felt like we're, we're second-class citizens to the university. And I, I would love to see, you know, some cooperation there and, and stuff.
And you know, one of the consider, well, really the only consideration when we're talking restaurant and hotel tax is, is this, is this going to grow that revenue stream and benefit restaurants and hotels? That's, that's really in, in, in this funding stream, that is, that's the ultimate question and really the only question. Those boards are not going to agree to anything unless it's going to positively affect their bottom line, which in turn affects our bottom line and makes us, gives us the ability to invest in these type of projects.
Right.
And the analysis is all thumbs up on this one.
Yeah.
For sure. I've, you know, I'm going to, I want a giant Maria head on the side of the bubble, just for her amazing-
Please don't do that.
Amazing work-
Do not do that.
As our Director of Tourism, oh, these many years.
Can I just get a nice little certificate that says, hi, you know, like, hey, way to go, thumbs up. No. But again, I do appreciate the partnership with Utah Summer Games and with, with SUU for bringing this forward. I think this is really truly a positive thing for everything that we're doing. But yeah, I, I do want a county logo on that big inflatable bubble. I think that's the least we could ask. So anyways, it would be nice if we had a recommendate, like a, a motion to approve the funding moving forward.
Is it my, who's-
I would entertain a motion.
Turn, is it my turn?
Is any other client or?
I have one question, and it has to do-
What's your name, sir?
Richard Wilson. I have one question. It has to do with, in the last couple of years, the school has requested funding, and one of those requests are practice fields that have this kind of reusability, because they, they, the, the problem is, as I understand it, is they can't allow their own PE groups out on the fields because they need to preserve them, because in our climate, the use of a, a natural field is hard on that. And so you can't do that. And so my question is, has the school board also been part of this conversation, so that we can stop having that request for funding from the schools to all the taxpayers to put an AstroTurf field in? And, and can we use this facility? And, and to Commissioner Robinson, you know, we talk about an MOU, but this sounds like it needs to be a contract, where we get a percentage of blocked-out time for, at the county's discretion, who, who gets to use it as a public and, and local sector, whether that's 10% block of time or 20%. I mean, right now, the initial kick-in is almost 50%.
Right.
But considering the, the maintenance and operations, that's a long-term, which needs to be generously considered, that yes, you know, we buy it, but they, they hold the gift forever, the gift of maintenance forever. That is a gift that keeps on giving, year after year, day after day. But, but that would be one question I have, is how, how can we get that other question off the ballot regularly, which is upgrading the fields at the local high schools and other schools? If this facility is going to be built, can they use it?
I think that's figured out long-term and not our-
We, we have, Mr. Wilson, we, we have a, an agreement that's being put together right now with Iron County School District and the university for shared-use facilities. So when we, university athletics needs help, we can use high school facilities and vice versa. So we have a great partnership right now with Iron, Iron County School District. We have a great partnership with their athletic directors and their coaches. And so when, when they need something, we're always there for them. If there's a snow game and our, our field can be plowed and they want to move over to our game, our field, then absolutely we'll, we'll be willing to help out every time. So, but we're doing a MOU right now with Iron County School District.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Doug.
All right. I would make a motion to approve the request for funding from the transit room tax and TRCC restaurant tax to help pay for SU athletic facility projects to benefit future sport tourism.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Great work. Number six, discussion of possible approval to begin the process for a tactical shooting range on property owned by Iron County Mountain Training.
So Pat Brower's here to speak to that. And is there anything in particular, in particular you'd like me to pull up first?
Well, I was going to kind of wing it, but I'll just read what I got. I have that.
The video, you've got the-
Sure, yeah, let's do that.
You want me to introduce it a little bit?
I'm Patrick Brower. I'm the owner of Iron Mountain Training Group. Hopefully SUU will forgive me for the sophistication in my presentation today. I got a video of a shooting match that we've recently done. I guess the point of what I'm trying to do today is a request for county land to be approved for a practical shooting range, not a tactical shooting range.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's all right. It's, practical shooting is a sport that is becoming popular, especially here in Southern Utah. This year, Southern Utah Practical Shooting Range down in Washington County will be hosting a Nationals event, which will bring tons of tourism to Washington County. If we could get just a small portion of that here in Iron County, I think we'd, you know, do well. But, so I guess, let's show the video and kind of give an explanation of what practical shooting is. This is just a smaller match that we've thrown here at the Reserve Bays that Maria manages. This match, I think, particularly, had 40 shooters. The one we did just last weekend, we had 60 shooters and raised over $3,000 for a veteran nonprofit, local veteran nonprofit. We got people signing up from all the way from Las Vegas, Salt Lake, Colorado. So bringing in some, you know, tourism to the area with the growing popularity of the sport. So I guess the purpose and benefits of turning this land into a practical shooting range, the establishment of a practical shooting range on the parcel would have significant benefits for both our local community and surrounding areas. Practical shooting is an increasingly popular sport, and we have seen participants from Nevada, Salt Lake, like I said, Colorado. Hosting large matches would bring tourists, create local economic, economic opportunities and spread awareness of the sport. We're also incorporating the practical shooting event into the Utah Summer Games for the first time this year, thanks to John. The range would provide a safe and controlled environment for firearms training and recreational use. It would also support law enforcement, which we've done training through my business, training with law enforcement, different, different types of things. Facility benefit would, a dedicated range would allow for larger matches and events where we could offer permanent location for storing and equipment, which would make our events bigger and better. Then every time we do one of these matches, I have to bring all of the equipment out and bring it all back, just because we have nowhere to store it and potentially have someone steal it. Range management and maintenance, this is where like, the county, a discussion would probably have to be had about what that would look like. But IMTG is capable of managing the range and ensuring proper upkeep and facility and offering public access. We could do a lot like the county does now, and just, if the county wants to use it, they could reserve the range through us, and we could just manage that to take that load off of Maria's- And we could, uh, just manage that to take that load off of Maria's hands. The current range we have now, which is the one in the video, is, uh, has increasing demand. Uh, we're limited to two weekends a month, month. So a dedicated range would allow us to do more matches. Uh, while IMTG doesn't have the resources to fully develop the range right now, the support from Southern, we have support from Southern Utah Veterans Association, which I'm sure a lot of you guys are aware of, um, and sports enthusiasts that are eager, eager to help. However, the county support would help expedite, um, the process and building the range and making it what it needs to be to do events like that. Potential concerns, it's the land that I'm asking about here, uh, is already in a pretty good natural barrier. That's northeast of where the shooting range is now. It's a dugout area. Uh, it looks like it had been used for, um, landfill purposes in the past. Uh, again, hopefully, SU will forgive me for stilling their thunder on the sophistication of my presentation. But this map kind of shows us, uh, an area, the road out to this area would need some work so that we could have two ways of travel. Also, a, a parking area built out. The white line indicates where we could dig out some more land and use that dirt to build up berms where the red lines indicate. Those would go, and we could build six bays like we have at the shooting range now.
Where is this in relation to the current range, which?
To the northeast, there's a big hill.
Okay.
And then it's on the northern aspect of that hill.
I got it.
So there's the, there's the existing shooting range here, and then you take that, uh, I don't know the name of that road, Shooting Range Road or the Three Peaks, it's not Three Peaks Road, but anyways, this guy right here.
Yeah, it's Shooting Range.
Who's?
And whose property, is whose property is that? Is that?
It's Iron County's property.
It's the county's property, yeah.
Is that just an island or do we own that whole area?
So if we.
Sorry, John, I, you don't need.
No, you're fine. I'll be quick.
I'm just curious.
So there's, what that is, is, um, old mining claims.
John's pretty fast at this with his experience.
Yeah, you said that, I just got lost.
No pressure, John.
Oh, that's, and I'm on the wrong road. There we are. Okay, so here we are, and then we'll see, it'll populate here in a sec, the parcels. Oh, yes, Three Peaks Loop, thank you. So this is, this is the one that we're talking about. Looks like it's still trying to load. I'm asking a lot of this computer right now. But then there are some other parcels owned by other people, but, um, Iron County ended up acquiring this piece.
The yellow's BLM?
Yeah. I don't know why it's not. Usually when you click on it, it'll.
Okay.
Anyway, there's, you can kind of see, they're really faint, but you can see parcels here. You think so?
So which road would you have to improve?
Just the entrance to that?
Just the one off the main road or this closer?
I believe it's the one that cuts off and goes to the right.
Right there.
Is that the one or over this way?
It's, uh, no, the other direction to east, that one, there, yeah.
So that would be the best access through there?
Yeah. I haven't tried the other one because it said private property, don't enter through that.
Okay.
Direction.
We, we, we've reached out to them to tell them to take that down.
Okay.
That's a public road by use, is it?
I'll have to check that.
Gotcha.
So they could use that other road if they, if it was better.
So maybe we could take a second, talk about some of the improvements that, so Pat kind of went out there and looked at it. We, Frank Nichols is here, and we only know about it because Frank said, hey, I want to buy that. And, uh, we, Kerry Jeffries and I are going to go through all of our Iron County parcels again this year and see if we can identify any that really we don't want to own like, like this. But in this case, um, we've been looking for something for, for Pat and his group. And, uh, you know, this kind of has some higher walls, it's, it's isolated, but accessible. It kind of, it kind of checked off several of the boxes. And so, um, what I, you know, and I kind of just took the temperature of the commissioners before, you know, to see if there was any kind of appetite for this and, uh, you know, I, I felt like it was worth having this discussion, but there would be a few things that would need to happen. Um, and most of it would be a little bit of earthwork. Uh, because the, because the surrounding, um, high spots are rocks, um, Pat's concerned about ricochets. So we'd want some softer berms. Um, and he's kind of outlined, is that what the red is?
Yeah, the red, and then also along the backdrop of, so they're basically that cliff face on the south.
Yeah.
Side.
So are you shooting to the north?
Uh, shooting into, to the south.
To the south, okay. And there's, and that's a high enough area to?
Yeah, the, the, the hill, it's, uh, so it's dug into the hill.
That, that, yeah, there you go.
So that gives you a little bit better idea of what you're looking at there.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful.
So, um, and then we had a conversation with Bruce Anderson, our Public Works Director, and he's like, um, because I approached him about, you know, possibly trying to dispose of it for, you know, Frank wanted to purchase it. And Bruce said, well, actually, that might make a good, uh, C and D pit down the road. And so he, he, he would rather preserve that for the county's sake. But in the meantime, I don't think it would hurt to consider what Pat is proposing. It would take just a minimal amount of, uh, work, a little bit of improvement of the roads, some berm there. We'd have to figure out, uh, Sam, the, you know, any kind of legal issues or agreements that we'd want to try and put together. And I think commissioners, you'd want to think about what you'd really, if, if you wanted to move forward with this, how you'd want it to be complected, if you would like to have, have it be privately managed, but a, a, a county property, you know, uh, we, we might want to visit hard about, um, liability. Of course, we have a shooting range, uh, but I think also we'd want to think about the fact that do we want to give Maria more, O and M more, you know, more scheduling burden? Whereas, you know, Pat, Pat's group may want to just take that on. So it might require, kind of like, uh, what Cedar City does with the trap shooting, uh, something similar to that. So those are some, some of the thoughts that we had. That's a lot to throw at you all at once.
But can I, so this is another, this is another project that, that this, you know, we've met. Uh, in fact, John and Pat and I and Maria, were you there, Sam? I was thinking, Sam was there as well. To try and, you know, work out issues at the shooting range and just determined that with, with Pat's group's needs, the shooting range just isn't optimum. Um, there, there, there are some issues there. So we, we said, you know what, we, we believe this is a worthwhile project. Let's see if we can help you find somewhere that's a little bit more bene, that's, that's more suited for the type of competition as well as a little bit of storage. And so this is kind of the result of that.
We thought, we thought perhaps we could kill three or four or five or six birds with one stone on this one. That was kind of, that was the thought, but we recognize that there's several hurdles to overcome if we do that. Because that would, that would allow, you know, Pat to do, because his organization is growing in popularity and and numbers. Um, and the, the shooting range is already pretty heavily scheduled.
Kind of heavily scheduled anyway.
So to speak, but.
This would allow, this would, you know, ultimately, I think that, that would, there would probably be a little bit of O and M that comes to the county once this is, once this is up and running. But we, there's also, I mean, we can, there's some agreements that could be made to help mitigate that. Uh, and it is, it is be, it is an ever increasing sport that we are seeing some benefits and, you know, we can, we can look at some actual return on investment because of these type of events that are.
In a way, this is a similar conversation to the last.
It is. I mean, this is something that benefits, it, it benefits the county, and I think it's really minimal investment for us monetarily. It's just, this seemed like a.
So you, you're thinking like a net, net, net lease, where you lease the land at a minimal cost and you do all the improvements and?
Something that's.
Is that what you, what do you think, Sam?
That was one of the options that I considered as we were all talking, but I mean, it can go that way. It can go one where the county is like a primary, um, owner and operator with, uh, you know, a partnership. It could be, uh, the county takes it on entirely and then, uh, schedules it out, you know. So there's various levels of accountability the county can have and, uh, different levels of, um, financial input as well.
Does excavation include, um, removing that hill kind of to the north? And then just building berms? I mean, what kind of expense have you priced that out for excavation?
I haven't pressed anything out yet.
You see that hill to the north where you drive, there's a kind of that, where you drive in and, and down under the pit, that hill, would that have to be flattened out? Yes, that right there. Would that have to be flattened out or, or can you work with what's there?
We'd probably want to keep that, but more to the east, dug into that hill.
Okay.
Going to the east, um, to create more room and then also to get dirt for, so the white mark would be where we'd dig out.
That's probably pretty rocky out there, isn't it? I mean, I.
Yeah, it probably could be, um.
I know somebody's got a D10 cat.
Pat, maybe you could, uh, tell the commissioners about some of your conversations with the Southern Utah Veterans Group.
Yeah, I mean, they've sat down and had breakfast a couple of times and, uh, they've shown interest in helping us out if we throw fundraiser matches like the one we did last, like, uh, last weekend for a different veteran nonprofit, but, basically, the community of people that we have and it's growing is, uh, there's a lot of people willing to help. Southern Utah Veterans Association has a lot of resources. Basically, people willing to volunteer to help do some of the stuff. A lot of those guys are CBs or were in the Navy and did the construction stuff and.
They're not afraid.
They're, uh, they're working on their own facility right now, but, um, we, uh, we had some conversations and they're, they're willing to help. If we do some other, um, you know, uh, non, or like fundraiser stuff for them.
Right. Well, and I think, I think your group and their group could have some really good overlap anyway.
Oh, yeah.
So I've been, I've been glad you kind of made that connection, so. I don't have like a specific direction to recommend for the commission. Uh, I kind of wanted to just kind of get all this, draw all this spaghetti against the wall here to start with.
So if we, I mean, really what we're approving today or asked to approve is just to begin the process. But I mean, this isn't a, we're, we're not hammering out details. This is just a, hey, let's begin the process. Is that, am I?
Yeah, I mean, for us, I don't think there's any time sensitivity. I think for Pat, there probably is more.
Sure.
But, but I think also, I think it's worth giving it some thought as far as, um, maybe how we want to structure, what the county might want that to be, how much O and M and responsibility do we want to take on?
Sure.
Questions.
Like, I mean, personally, I would, I would be in favor of approving, I mean, it literally says in the agenda item to begin the process. You know, I think it's, I, I think we begin the process and then that's where every, you know, all the details come in.
And maybe, maybe the commissioners could appoint a liaison.
I'm already the shooting range liaison. I'm already the, I'm already the liaison in that realm, and that's.
I think, I think it would be reasonable to kind of sit down with, with Pat and, you know, and you and Sammy and, and try to figure out maybe how, you know, at least give the commissioners a few options moving forward.
Oh, yeah.
Um, what, you know, I think, I think one of the key considerations I think needs to be, being very careful not to add burden to Maria.
Right.
Because.
Unless she wants it, I mean.
She left. She's, oh, no, she didn't. She just, she came back. I thought Maria left.
You have a danger.
Earlier I accused her of being sneaky. I was right.
I'd, uh, I'd be willing to donate some time on a dozer or excavator, so.
Awesome.
I got them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe we keep it as, as simple and, and low key as we can. I think, I think security, I think, needs to be considered. I think, uh.
We would probably address some of those concerns in a conditional use permit, uh, if we were to lease it out. Uh, we would be able to address things like safety, uh, storage, uh, lighting, all of the, whatever it is. We can touch on that in a conditional use permit.
Yeah, and I, I would be concerned, um, from a liability standpoint. I mean, obviously, shooting range has its own special, but, but in terms of, one of my big concerns about having like a Connex at the shooting range is, man, that's a big flat target that there's no way people aren't going to put holes in, you know?
Yeah.
And, and, and so I, I, I would worry about that as far as, you know, trying to, trying to limit our liability and your loss. You know, those kind of things.
Yeah.
Maybe you bury the Connex in the hillside.
There you go.
Do that, especially where we're going to put a berm on that west side. We could literally bury it into a berm.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually, I would just tease him, but yeah.
That would work, um.
I think it's a, I think it's, I mean, what we've got on the agenda today to begin the process, we can, we can get into the weeds later.
It's exciting. It really does.
Awesome.
But, uh, yeah, so any other questions or not all entertain a motion?
No, I would move, uh, to approve to begin the process for a practical?
Practical.
Practical, not tactical, sorry.
I knew, a practical shooting range on the property owned by the county and it's APN SA dash E dash four one three five.
Second to that motion.
Been moved in second in all favor.
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Pat. We'll, we'll figure out when we can maybe sit down and meet next. I'll wrangle that guy.
Awesome.
Hey, thank you.
Perfect.
Appreciate you.
Number seven, discussion of possible approval of the Cedar Valley Belt Route Alignment Plan, Rich.
Good morning, commissioners. John, I've given you a flash drive up there.
Yep, I'm, I'm getting there.
So, uh, just to explain what we're doing and why we need to do this, we had a study that, uh, uh, in 2023 and concluded in December and posted on the website. But we realized that we never actually brought it to commission for the alignment to be legislatively approved as that being the alignment. And the reason we want to do this is because there's been a lot of interest in, uh, the acquisition of those properties that are along the belt route. And one of the things the landowners want to know, that there have been, uh, three that have approached me that want to get ahead of the, the belt route coming through by, by getting it figured out. And the only way we can do that is to be firm on where the location is. We're, we're, we don't want to have a hodgepodge of, yes, for this property, the location is here, for that property, the location's there. And then only to find out at the end of the day, we don't have very good alignment. So back in 2023, we hired Kim Lee Horn to do an access, uh, management proposal in which they looked at our major crossings. But at the same time, uh, as a bonus to that, they also gave us an alignment for the belt route.
Didn't we have a vote on that back then, the alignment?
Well, that was adopted by, um, Horux Engineering as the major master plan. This was refining it a little bit.
I see, okay.
Correct. So if you would, if you just pull up the, the file, I'll show you, they're listed one, two.
Which file would you like me to, do you want me to do the KMZ file?
One, two, three, four. They're in the order.
Okay.
Do number one first. So we're going to go to the KMZ file, which will give you the overlay and also show you where the old belt route was in alignment with it. It's going to take a second for this to, to load and.
Start closing programs over here. Okay, I'm going to turn off some stuff.
If, uh, if I can have your mouse for a minute when you're done.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, I'm going to let you.
So we'll just, we'll just start north to, uh, south to north. So as we zoom in here, we see the belt route. And, and so they did some, some realignment. And let me, let me first explain. So everywhere you see this red line out to the side, that's the old alignment, right? And so when Kim Lee Horn came in and looked at how we're going to, to do this, they looked at, at, uh, speed limits and, and curvatures and, and then the intersections. So it was always, uh, felt that the best way to do the intersection at Iron Springs Road and, uh, the belt route would be around about. But, um, and fortunately, we have good neighbors like, like Frank Nichols who's sitting here because he started to do some development on this property recently. And we got together and I was able to give him the line drawings, his, his survey or the line dryers to, to allow us to acquire what this looks like rather than this orange line right here to the side, which was straight. And so we're going to have to pop out a little, come around. And so we're going to have to pop out a little, come around, just so we get more of a, a perpendicular alignment to Iron Springs Road. It's very awkward to come into anything at that kind of an angle. And so that, that, so what we're doing here is we're actually dealing with the details of the actual alignment. And so that's why I've asked for this meeting today and for the commissioner's input as well as their approval of this is that we would be looking at, at this actual alignment. We have, uh, folks to the south that have already approached us. And what you see is the way it cuts across properties. For example, here, we just look at, at this property. If I, if I had the parcels on this, but I don't because this is a Google Earth. But you can kind of see where the outline of these properties are. Well, they want to know, how's it going to impact my property and, and what we just recently?
Click on that range twelve and you'll have the parcels. Over here, up, up, there you go. Just the check mark in front of it. Just to the le, to the right of it, to the left of it, sorry. Keep going left.
Little box.
Little box.
Oh, I can't, uh, my screen is hardly showing.
You got it.
All right. So, so this is just an example, and this is an example of what we, we adopted just this morning. As you can see, these are twenty acre parcels, minimum sizes, but this one would leave a little remainder. And so we, we want to make sure that we're not penalizing the property owner and saying, well, thank you very much for your belt route and your dedication. But you've got an unbuildable lot now.
Well, but that could be a good site for a
That'd be a good reason for them to say no. Yeah, and so, so with this realignment, uh, we have, oh, by the way, if you see these, these red spots, they're, they're a point of, uh, concern because they're the, they're, they're properties that, that lose, um, direct access when the belt route comes through. We're not going to invite people to have driveways onto the belt route. And we're not actually going to allow it. Then, so that, that in general is the belt route alignment. Up here, you see a little more. And what this, uh, realignment did is, is it took into account speed and curvature of the belt route. Whereas the old belt route was just kind of a, a two finger, let's, let's kind of do it here. Horox did a great job. But we tried to also look at minimizing impact on properties instead of, uh, this one, we just have to come through. But we can touch the bottom of these rather than come through the middle of them and minimize that impact. And that was there. Now, we just keep moving along. This is the belt route. We soften a curve here. We go up, we, we widen the curve out here and we soften it. We leave more usable property on this side. And one of the things, as we looked at just two years ago, almost, December of twenty twenty-three, no, year and a half ago.
Is that the Enit Gravon right there where you're, where it was a little marshy and they were worried about soils?
Yes, yes, yes. So, we, we have, this, by the way, is also another recommended roundabout on S R one thirty.
How far up from Mid Valley is that?
Sixty-four, yeah. Mid Valley is.
So it's not like a thousand feet away?
No, no, no. So that's the overall realignment. And if it, one of the places that there was a bit of, that I need to bring to your attention is, which will generate another conversation, is right here. Will you, will you pull up, uh, slide number two?
I only have one mouse.
We're going to build a dual mouse where two people can, can
What about the eastern end?
Go ahead, John. What about it? What's your question?
Just curious.
Does that go up the canyon, uh, through Jones's property, still on the, on the north side of that canyon?
If you look, you'll see that it actually really closely follows Horox's. See there, little orange is almost in line. So your question is, yes, and we've discussed that.
Are we going to put it up off the bottom a little bit on that north side?
We are, and we've already discussed that with Spencer Jones and, and that. So, all right, so.
Is this the one?
No, number two on my list. It should be on my flash drive.
That says two.
What?
Uh, you know what? It's this one. You've got two belt route and then two, so that's number three, is that.
Okay.
Number, you want, you want that map?
No, I really want, uh,
The high T layout?
No, this one.
Okay, that's what that is.
Really? Oh, thanks.
Page two. Okay, we should have rehearsed.
All right, can you just broaden it out?
Yes.
Make that fit the screen a little better. So recently, probably what, in the last eight weeks, we found a, a flaw with, with the layout. It paralleled not, uh, thirty-six hundred north. Nothing's really happening on thirty-six hundred north. I'm going to move over the slide so I can use my finger and point at things. So, we'll go back one, John, here, here. So as you see, it parallel thirty-six hundred north, but we don't want access on thirty-six hundred north. We don't want a, a situation where you're coming into the thirty-six hundred north and then you're getting on and off the interstate. So that, now flip over to my, my drawing here. So what was proposed, Kim Lee Horn suggested that thirty-six hundred north stayed parallel to the belt route here. And we do this with thirty-six hundred north, so we come into a T. Thirty-six hundred north is a natural crossing point for the belt route. They had other suggestions like this one or this one, but they took the whole realignment out of skew. So we let the realignment of thirty-six, of the belt route where it was, understanding that it would be just north of the existing road. And so thirty-six hundred north would come down and do that. It'd be a, a small, uh, adjustment to thirty-six hundred north rather than adjusting the whole belt route. Thirty-six hundred north is one of the authorized crossing points with an intersection. I have other slides that you can look at if you're interested. You can see a close up of, of the, of the, uh, roundabout on Iron Springs and also I have on there the high T. This is what we were able to provide to Frank's surveyor so that he could make sure that we had the acquisition and, and obtained the right amount of property. That's quite a big roundabout. That's, that's got a, a two hundred and fifty foot diameter roundabout so that it can take a
All the, all the heavy traffic that's going to be going in and out of there, that's, that's a big concern.
Uh, so it'll take actually a, a, a three trailer truck.
Yeah.
What, uh, what did you have to increase the radius? Took like two hundred and thirty feet? Was that the diameter?
Uh, yeah, the di, well, yeah, it's actually a, we, you'd call it two fifty because of the fudge factors. It says two thirty.
So how does that compare to like, say, the, the roundabout at Mid Valley Road and Highway one thirty, the existing one?
It's, it's larger than that one.
Great, a bigger, a, a, a
A bigger
Circle so that the, okay.
Yeah, and they, and they're doing pretty well with theirs, uh, now for everything coming out of Minersville and going out to Minersville. But we, we know that we have quite a bit of truck track, so we wanted to make there was enough room. And this has also been shared with, uh, our consultants at Stanley and at U Dot's for the improvements on Iron Springs Road. Uh, we're not going to build a roundabout right now, but we want to make sure that everyone in the future knows that's what's happening. And if you, if you're interested in looking at the next slide, you can zoom in on that, John. And that's what a high T looks like.
And what do you mean by high T for?
Well, so, let me walk over here again. So this is the intersection of Iron Springs Road and fifty-six right through here. Here's fifty-six. So this becomes a barrier. Zoom in a little. And so we have a right-hand turn lane only. We have a through lane. But this, this requires that the traffic coming out here actually has a place to pause before we get into the eastbound traffic because of these, these barriers. This, this road, which is, is not going to make everyone as happy as they want to be, is going to be a right turn. There won't be any way to turn left back to Iron Springs. So that's, that's where the T interferes with fifty-three going. But they can come around and get fifty-three, just over on the belt route. That's the
So why is it called the high T?
Because of the T. Whether you're in the roundabout where you can go around and then get off of where you want, there is actually a, a snobby point of the T. This is where that T would be.
Move that T out in further into the road so that it doesn't interfere. People don't have to go as far around many lanes to get across.
You know, we just had that accident just a short time ago. And, and really, if you're out there and stuff and, and you've got a truck coming and turning onto Iron Springs Road and, and you think you've got space to turn back toward the city and you get halfway across and you realize it's a lot further to the, to the lane than I thought it was.
Yeah.
Yeah. This, this actually doesn't change that distance as much as it gives you a safe space to stop.
Enough, enough space for a truck, trailer combo or?
No, 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 not at all.
Yeah, there's not that much room there.
But it, but it would give you and your car space to pause. Not, it's not intended to be a pause space, but it does give you a pause space, so.
The trucks and trailers will be able to maneuver it fine, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and they're pulled out further now. Rather than trying to, you know, this will be hardened too, if my understanding is right. They're kind of defended against this traffic coming this way.
Right.
So they'll, they'll be able to pull out this, rather than, than this being your stop line, you've got a stop line over there ahead.
Is that?
What, see, what, what's actually happening is that this traffic coming out here is able to come into this lane. This, this traffic going eastbound over fifty-six now has a dedicated lane around this side, so this traffic won't interfere with that.
You see, just if
Turn left into its own lane right here without having to worry about this traffic coming this way.
Will this be a, like a partnership with our federal money for Iron Springs?
No. This is totally theirs.
Even though it encroaches into Iron Springs, they'll take care of it?
They're going to take care of the whole thing. It's going to be all on their budget, yeah. And, and I want to point out that, uh, just a few weeks ago, you noticed how, how Reed jumped in and made such a, a nice clarification there. He was accused of being an engineer a few weeks ago. We thought it was a compliment. We being the engineers in the room.
He just doesn't want the engineer jokes.
So, last but not least, and perhaps somehow as this is adopted, I would like to have built into this some flexibility. For example, on that thirty-six hundred, we may come out a few years from now, and I'd like the county engineer to be able to, to not have to come back to commission meeting to make minor realignment adjustments. Because they might arise elsewhere. We just happened to come up on this one sooner than later. I don't know, John, if that's possible that this says, you know, as long as they meet the intent of the, of the, of the belt route alignment, that minor adjustments will be approved. If we get out there and surveyors start to survey and they say, hey, county engineer, it may be better, you're in conflict with this other road, just be aware of that.
I think, Sam, if they, if they just said something like, you know, minor engineering with, you know, approval with minor engineering changes. The problem with that is that's giving you or any of your successors a little bit of rope. Um, and so you'll have to decide at what point do you not take that on without consulting, consulting back with the commission? If it's, you know, if you need to make a, a small adjustment, how small is, how big is too big to just keep going, you know?
I, I would say, for example, something like this is, is big to this one landowner, but minor to the overall intent of the belt route. So if, if it gets crazy and, and moves right out of, out of the intent of the, of the alignment, then I'd say that was too big for me. I wouldn't take it, but I think we need to give, just so we're not, um, so we're making decisions without, that need to be made as they come up.
Well, and they will.
In a free flow.
So if, how would you feel then if maybe the commissioner said something like, you know, approve, approval, you know, with the allowance of, you know, making minor engineering changes?
As recommended by survey and competent consultants. That's the only way I, we, we did this. That's why we asked Kim Lee Horn to look at, at this alignment before I brought it to you.
Yeah, this is one of a hundred examples you'll, you'll go through, I'm sure.
Possibly. And we are, my goal is to acquire as much acquis, uh, acquire as much access for the belt route as I can in, in the time I'm here. And we've already acquired, I think, five or six lots and we're looking at three more to, to acquire, which we won't have to acquire the whole lot because we'll have them surveyed out and just
If you had to estimate a percentage, this is just because I think most people aren't aware of just how much work has gone into this north end. You've got most of the engineering pretty close.
We have that, yes.
Yeah, but, but when it comes to, you know, acquisition of, of the needed property, as a percentage, how close would you say you are if you had to guess?
If I were to guess, I'd say, uh, under ten percent.
Under ten. In other words, we're not starting, we're not starting in June.
No. And there, there isn't a drive for it nor the finance for it. But if we can acquire, perhaps that would be the leg in which we would then approach federal grant money and U Dot to say, the, the long-term goal would be that the belt route becomes U Dot's property. Because it actually connects U Dot to U Dot. Right now, it's not, well, it sort of is fifty-seven hundred.
What's the process of getting them to adopt it? Is that hard to do?
Yeah.
Formal petition?
They, they're not unlike anyone else. You build it, we'll take it over. And it's, that's the biggest problem. But we have, you know, when I started here four years, four and a half years ago, uh, and learned about the belt route, I thought that was about twenty years out. With all the development we're seeing out in the west side of the valley, I, I'm thinking we're, we're going to start putting pieces of the belt route together probably in the next five to ten years. There are, there are absolutely places where we could do short connections. For example, Sage Hill Road to four thousand could be a connection. We've got Sage Hill Road almost completed to where it connects to the belt route, half of it anyway. And wouldn't that be a nice addition to be able to, uh, connect the north east side of the valley to the west side over there by the landfill rather than always driving all the way down and around? And that would be part of it.
We better move along.
Sorry, Commissioner, appreciate you.
We could talk about this all day. It's interesting, but thank you. Do you have any, any other, uh?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
I do not. Thank you for your time, commissioners. If you want to, I'm, I'm looking for a recommendation that you adopt the, the belt route as it is with that caveat that's small and minor adjustments.
I'll entertain a motion. Who's turn?
It's Ken's turn.
Make a motion to approve Cedar Belt Route Alignment Plan.
Was there any additional language?
I, I think we talked about it was, uh, with, um, allowing for minor engineering changes.
In this, in the
In the scope of
What was the word?
Incidental?
No, no. What, the word I'm looking for, uh, match, to accommodate the intent of the belt route. In other words, we know where the belt route is. These minor adjustments need to just be adopted as they come along. So adopt the alignment of the belt route as presented with the
Necessary changes.
Allocation, with the notice that the county engineer may, uh, approve small modifications.
Okay. So I
Think I got it.
You got it? Thank you.
I've moved to approve this, the Cedar Belt Route Minor
Allowing for minor
Allowing for minor engineering changes to accommodate the intent Allowing for minor engineering changes to accommodate the intent of the belt route.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's scary giving you that much.
Yeah.
I'm like, whoa.
Just kidding. That's fine. All right, thank you very much. Uh, let's see. So we're at, we got to reconvene as the Iron County Commission or Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency and go to eight. Discussion and possible approval of ICCD and RA Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one. A resolution approving and adopting the amended community development project area plan for the Iron Springs Solar Community Development Project Area. Adam, Adam Long.
So this is relating to the public hearing we had a few minutes ago. Uh, as I mentioned, then, the proposal here is to amend the project area plan for the existing Iron Springs Solar Community Development Project Area, adding a hundred and sixty acre parcel to accommodate a battery project. Maybe it would make sense if I can kind of give an overview of the other things that are on the agenda here and how they fit together. Uh, we have, we have essentially three different action areas here. The first is amending the project area plans. That's changing the boundary. That's this resolution and also a county ordinance later on in the agenda. We have proposed amendments to the existing interlocal agreements. So these are the agreements between the agency and the taxing entities, allowing the agents to, agency to receive part of the tax increment generated here. Uh, and, and that amendment is really just accommodating the expansion. We need the consent of the taxing entities before we, before the agency's collecting tax increment for many new areas. And the third conceptual area relating to the Iron Springs project is a proposed participation agreement with the battery storage entity. So this is essentially a, an incentive agreement or a tax abatement agreement. In effect, it's a, a partial property tax rebate for the battery project, uh, which matches the solar project in it, both its terms, terms in, in, by way of percentage and also remaining years. I'm happy to answer specific questions on any of those or.
So my question, Adam, is, um, we've had some, uh, concerns from staff and Commissioners about the amount of, um, incentive we give back. And I guess, uh, my vote today would be to pass what we need to pass to, to, to allow you to keep moving. But as far as nailing down the amount of incentive we're going to land on, that we table that until another meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, um, let me just make sure we're all on the same page. So we've, we've done the public hearing that was noticed and, and we've checked that.
Right.
Off the list. The incentive that's being proposed for this battery project matches the solar project. So this matches the other three projects that we considered back in November.
Which agenda item number is that? Is that number nine?
So it's, number nine is the interlocal agreement side of it. Number ten is the participation agreement side of it. And then we also have interlocal agreement approvals for unincorporated area services district number two. That's number thirteen. And then number fifteen for the county side of the interlocal agreement. The proposed terms here are a seventy percent, seventy percent of the tax increment generated by the battery project going to the agency, which is the same as a solar project, but only for the remaining years, which ends in twenty thirty-one. So depending on how quickly the battery project is constructed, that's five, maybe six years at seventy percent. So it's a, that's a very short timeframe compared to the original fifteen-year timeframe, essentially just riding the coattails of the, the remaining years of the solar project.
So in other words, the, the clock doesn't reset if you do that?
The clock doesn't reset. And the advantage, you know, one of the appealing things about this is by the time the battery project incentive ends, um, it's, it's only partially depreciated. Obviously, the solar project and the battery project, the personal property depreciates, you know, to a, to nine percent of the original value. So in this case, at the end of twenty thirty-one, the battery project will still be eighty-seven percent good. Uh, so still paying taxes on, on most of that personal property value.
Do they know what the estimated, uh, value of that will be?
Yeah, and I, I didn't give you the, the spreadsheet this time around. Um, I think you had it in November, but based on the, based on the projections, I'm, I'm happy to go through them. Based on the projections of a roughly a hundred million dollars of taxable value for just the Iron Springs Battery Project, that would generate for Iron County alone, net of the incentive, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, you know, through twenty thirty-one.
That's a general fund tax revenue?
Yeah.
Is that your statement?
Just, just plain old property tax revenue.
Yeah.
And then for the twenty, over the twenty-five year expected life of the battery project, uh, the total tax revenue to Iron County, again, net of the incentive payments is seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
But that's with a seventy percent.
That's.
Right?
So that, so that's, that's Iron County receiving thirty percent of the, of the total for the next six years and then receiving full freight property tax.
We're not locked, we're not, well, this is an expansion of the solar. We're not locked into that, right? We can choose what we want to do on the battery part.
On, on this, on this one, we are not. This is a little bit different than the other projects where it was all within the existing project area and covered under the existing agreements. So this is, this is a separate decision.
And you said, uh, an estimated eighty-seven percent good after the remaining years of the.
Yeah, in twenty thirty-two, it'd be eighty-seven percent good. Maybe ninety percent, depending on how many years it's been in place.
Yeah. How, when, in other words, through the depreciation, because it's personal property, the value will go down to eighty-seven percent at the end of the incentive period for the battery.
Correct.
We're talking the same project, the same deal, the same time schedule as the larger Iron Springs project. But the solar will have depreciated to almost nothing.
The, the solar will depreciate it to, uh, fifteen years is thirty-three percent. So thirty-three percent of the original value for the solar project.
So I believe it was a few years after Iron County had one of the first big, you know, commercial solar projects, and it was the one here in Parle One Valley. Dennis Stoll kind of was working on that before he passed away. When it changed, when, when, when the, when the valuation changed to the personal property with that very aggressive depreciation schedule, it really, I think, it really, it kind of, it kind of, because Iron County had been incentivizing them and you have this aggressive depreciation, you know, one of the great arguments that people make for.
Thank you, Sam.
Is, you know, the but for argument, you know, but for this incentive, it wouldn't exist. And I think that's, that's a valid one, but I think, you know, the Commissioners and certainly myself, not that I, I'm not anybody, but that, but the, uh, the idea being is, okay, that's great, but what benefit to the county are we talking about? You know, what is the bottom line? Um, and, and I, it, 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 as time went on, it kind of started to feel like a bait and switch a little bit, not by your part, but that we, you know, we, Iron County, I've just been around for a while. But that, you know, you, you would say, okay, we're going to incentivize these, we're going to get some good revenue, and that's, that was kind of true, but then it really, it became kind of a hollow deal, I think, toward the end. And, and I think that's, I think that's the concern that we're kind of getting toward today.
Yeah, and so to hit on a couple of points, the, the underlying concept here is this argument, what we call the, the but for argument, that but for the agency assistance, so these effectively a tax rebate, this project or, or any other incentivized project wouldn't happen. So by giving them, you know, essentially, essentially making this project feasible through the use of tax increment and, and assistance offered through the agency, we bring this project here, um, or any other type of project. Um, and different types of projects have different benefits, different communities have different desires. You know, a, a solar project or a battery project, at its core, it brings tax base and tax revenue. And, you know, as, as John said, it's a fairly small amount of the original tax revenue by the time the project depreciates. Uh, but the county and other taxing entities, entities do get the benefit of the, the other seventy percent throughout the life of the project. Other benefits for a project like this are some temporary construction jobs, um, and then really one or two permanent jobs. There are other, other types of projects that the agency might engage in, um, you know, depending on the community, it could be a retail project or manufacturing, which brings jobs and people.
The building inspection on a project, a project like this is rather significant.
And, and I guess notably on the battery project, so is the sales tax. The solar panels are tax exempt, but the battery facilities are not. The sale, sales tax exempt, I should clarify. So, so there are some benefits. It's a fair point that the benefits are, you know, by incentivizing the project, it's not nearly the, the full impact that we would see if the project happened regardless. Um, and that's really, really the question that you as elected officials have to answer.
What we're saying is, we want the benefits, but we don't want to get away with the foreign meat.
Sure.
Right. And I'll give you an example of that. When I was on the Cedar City Council, the tour of Utah that used to do the bike deal, they used to ask us to give them a lot of incentives to come. I mean, hotel rooms, there was a lot. And Maria, Mike probably knows about that, being in that field, but, that realm, but, um, you know, we, at, 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 at one point, we got to the point where we thought, you know what? We have an awesome location. We have awesome volunteers. We have everything they need. And then the next year, we decided we're not going to do anything, and they still came. And I'm not saying that's what we're going to hear, but I think, I think the appetite among staff and commission, based on what John's explained and some of these variables, um, the appetite to give major incentives or rebates are waning.
And, and that's fair, and this is, this, this is.
I don't know if you mean, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, this, this is Nathan Runyon. He's, uh, you've met him before. He's the attorney for the, the developer on this point. If you'd like to hear from him, he would like to talk, I think.
Well, one other benefit that, um, that's important to note, um, aside from the fact that this, this project, it's, it's, you know, six years, uh, for the battery storage only, and the battery storage does depreciate differently. But one, one important aspect is that the new growth from the personal property is obtained through, um, the CRA process. So if, if we didn't include the battery storage within a CRA, then that new growth, we wouldn't be able to obtain that. And so you wouldn't be able to, to capture that in your budgets. And so that's one attractive part of including this value. You can, you can, you can put the entire amount of the value of the project into the new growth base because it's personal property. If it weren't, uh, in the CRA, you wouldn't get the personal property in the new growth. So that's one reason it's, it's very attractive to put, um, these projects in. And new growth is, is, is very beneficial. And as, um, Adam mentioned, it's only for a six or seven year period, whereas the solar, it's just matching the solar. And the other projects that we had, were before you, had the same deal where it just, it just so happens that this project has the storage just outside of the prior solar project. And that's why we're here and having to, to address this. If it were within the same footprint, it would already really be included in the agreements that were done previously. So it's really treating this project differently just because it's barely outside of the project area.
I guess, and maybe I can ask you quite, you know, so I know, I know Ken's in Ag and Commissioner, former Commissioner Wood was in Ag. And there's a lot of consternation on the Ag's, Ag community's part. Um, I, I know Nicole said we have nineteen solar projects in Iron County, and I think Terry's correct that, so we have more like twenty-three, um, which is way more than any, any, any other counties have.
Sure.
And at what point are we concerned about using up all our land for solar? And it doesn't become multiple use anymore. You can't graze cattle on it. You, you know, so we've got to weigh those other things too.
No question. And so, so this piece is only the battery storage?
I didn't mean to.
Well, I will push back. Stoles actually runs sheep under theirs.
Right.
Mm-hmm. And, and some projects can do that.
Yes, it does.
So this is adding a hundred and sixty acres, but only twenty-two acres are going to be used for the battery storage. So there's going to be the other, the other, the rest of the parcel can still be used for Ag use, not, not an issue at all. So that, and that's the other point is, uh, this a hundred and fifty million dollar investment is on twenty-two acres. So that's a, that's a very large investment for a small, um, land area to have that, that type of investment. I mean, there's, I, there's, there's probably very few areas within the county that have a hundred and fifty million dollars in investment in just a, a twenty-two acre, uh, area, so.
I guess what we need to know, I mean, this is very complicated.
Yeah.
To me, it is. I've, it's, I've always struggled with understanding all the variables, but.
Moving pieces.
But, um, I guess what we need to know is, but like you were saying, Adam, you know, if we're locked in and we, we pretty much have to approve it, we have to approve it, right? Because if we've already got, if, if that's our only option. So we need to know which ones we have to approve and which ones we have flexibility on, because we might table those and appoint a commissioner to act as a liaison with staff to kind of talk about our options. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see more information on this because ultimately it starts to turn into a shell game where a company acts as selling it to company Y so they can receive tax benefit from the federal government. And it's this huge conglomerate that are buying these and just moving them around to gain another benefit. And we're not getting anything out of it. I shouldn't say not getting anything, we're getting a minimal amount of benefit for the impact that it has on our area. And.
Yeah, and so if I could hit a couple of points in turn, as far as what we are, what you as the agency board are obligated to approve, you don't need to take, you don't, you're not required to take action on anything on the agenda today. Um, this is, unlike the other, the other three battery projects that were before you in November, this is a separate parcel, um, requires some amended agreements before it is, before all the, all those things happen. And it is admittedly a complicated process. So you could certainly table all of these if you were so inclined. I have maybe one, one I would suggest looking at that's related to a different proposed project. And to Board Member Robinson's point, maybe it would be helpful to provide you with more information, both as to this specific project. Um, and then what Danny Stewart and I had talked about, you know, before he moved on was, you know, trying to pull together analysis of what the redevelopment projects, so mostly solar projects, bring to the county in terms of both tax revenue and decreased tax rate for the county as a whole. I think that would be helpful information to pull together too. And I'm, I'm, David Johnson and I are happy to work on that.
Right.
Um, Adam, could you compare and contrast? It seems like there's kind of two options, well, three options, which is to not approve any, any of it as far as Iron, just let Iron Springs stay the way that it is. Or they move forward but without any incentive. But then what they're proposing is, is to expand the project area, keep the original agreement with, with the earlier rate. So compare that to having to, maybe they would have to try and pursue a separate one with the lower incentive rate and how that might look. So the, the, adding to the existing versus starting over with that particular project.
So I guess what you're saying?
Yeah.
Could we approve the expansion zone, but then negotiate on the rate? Or is that locked in with a former rate, former contract?
Yeah.
Right? Is that what you're saying?
Kind of, there's.
But let, let me take a crack at it. Um, so no, not locked in. Um, no, nothing about this one is locked in. As far as, you know, what's, what's on the agenda is essentially bringing the battery project in under the same terms as a solar project. So really what we're talking about is a five or six year incentive at seventy percent.
We're adding some acres to the original.
Which, which in the term of renewable project incentives is average to a little high as far as percentages go right now, you know, in the current environment. I think that's a, that's a fair statement. But the term is very, very short. Um, so we're talking about seventy percent for six years versus, you know, maybe fifty or sixty percent for fifteen years, which is maybe more, more typical of new projects that are coming through today across the state. So it's a arguably a good deal as far as the incentive offer.
It might be worth, and worth an economic analysis to compare doing a new one at a lower rate versus jumping, extending the old one with the higher rate, but a lower, a shorter period. And how that might, I mean, if you, if you want to just look at it from a purely tax revenue, because basically you've got these big field of solar panels, they're going to add. add twenty acres, they're going to spend a hundred and fifty million dollars. And they're, they want to lump it under the old plan. Um, and, but there's only so many years left of the old plan and, and we're talking personal property, so it depreciates. So if you can, saving on the years of depreciation from the county and the taxpayer perspective, I, I don't know, is, is that better than negotiating a more aggressive new one? And maybe explain the housing element and, and one of the reasons that we see so many requests for the extension or expansion of the original contracts.
Uh, yeah, so-
A lot there to unpack, sorry.
So how, new projects, so new community reinvestment project areas, which are the, the flavor of project area that the agency can create now, require a, in almost all cases, a mandatory ten percent allocation toward, the code defines it as income targeted housing. Um, it's a little more, little more broad than that, but, but, but basically affordable housing. Um, so ten percent of everything the agency takes in, you know, so as far as tax increment, the agency takes in a hundred thousand dollars of tax increment for a given year, ten thousand dollars that is set aside into a, into a separate account for housing purposes to be used eventually.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, not ten thousand.
Ten, ten thousand dollars of my hypothetical hundred thousand dollars. I, I used to be a CPA. I could, I could do very basic math at least. Um, so, so that is one distinction between expanding an existing project area or creating a new project area. What, what was next on your list, John?
So how that might compare to, yeah, starting over and having a separate project area, although related to Iron Springs, but with a, a negotiated and lower rate, but for a longer term.
We can, we could do it either way.
I'm just saying-
Yeah, so-
From, from, from the county's perspective, how might that look compared to extending the original?
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying as far as, as far as whether we talk about an expanded community development project area or CDA, or a new community reinvestment project area, if we do a community reinvestment project area, we have that mandatory housing allocation. But as far as the terms of tax entity participation, either years or percentages, you can, you have the same flexibility either way. If, if hypothetically, the tax entities wanted to do one hundred percent participation for five years or four years on this, we could do that under either the existing CDA expansion, like we've been talking about today, or under a new community reinvestment project area. It's, you know, two ways to skin the same cat.
And to ask, to, to Paul's point, is, is what is here today locked in if they wanted to just change?
Expansion area.
The, the, yeah, well, the, the term or the rate?
No, not locked in. This is, this is all before the agency for approval and after this.
Say we want to discuss, you know, table this and discuss the, you know, rebate amount, percentage, but we want to go ahead and approve the expansion area. Or do, would you rather just do it all at once?
I, I think it makes sense to do it all at once.
Luke, do you have something to add?
Just, just for- Yeah, regarding this specific project, so that Iron Springs Solar, it's been in place for a number of years. This battery expansion where it only is five or six years, just talking with Nicole, because we're the ones that brought up concerns about this, um, we would feel okay about doing that because it is only for five or six years at the seventy percent. But where we really want to look at the different percentages and the years going forward is with new projects that are going to have a bigger impact countywide, um, where it is part of an existing project, I mean, not a huge deal. If you guys do want to maybe go fifty percent and just approve the fifty percent today, I mean, that would even better, but fit five years at the seventy percent, not a huge deal. Um, the only thing on the agenda today with something for a new project is the, is it the Antelope project?
I can talk to that.
But yeah, all these other ones are only regarding this Iron Springs one.
So number eight's what we're talking about, the expansion. And then we could, we could make a motion to do the expansion area and whoever makes a motion could throw out the percentage and we can vote on that. And then you go back to your people and see if they want to do it.
And see if they do it or not. Right, yeah. And then going forward, I talked with David a little bit ago, just about doing an analysis of seventy percent versus a forty percent on future projects. So we can run the numbers and see kind of what the difference is and how that would affect taxes going forward. But yeah, this, this one, it's only, I mean, I don't want to say small, it's a big investment, but it's just this one project. But, so yeah, that's how.
Hey Luke, while you're there.
Yeah.
It's, this is, this is so weird, it feels like voodoo to, to, to people who are, you know, I don't, aren't around it all the time. Could you, could you try to simplify or explain the, 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 the new growth part of it when it comes to something like this? And what, what the point was there with, with the new growth? I think that's an important thing to, to kind of wrap our head around if you're, if you're prepared to talk.
Yeah, so, well-
Kind of put you on the spot there, I'm sorry.
I think it's changed a little bit, but, um, when there is a new project, so we take the base amount of how much they're being taxed before the project starts, and we continue to receive property taxes on that base amount. Any addition, say property's worth a hundred thousand and they put five million into it, and the rate is fifty percent, we're only going to collect taxes on fifty percent of that new five million dollars. The remaining fifty percent is set aside and sent back to that company for their incentive. So in other words, instead of getting five million dollars of new growth, we're only getting two and a half million of new growth. And then once that depreciates down, once that, that project area ends in fifteen years, which most of them are, then we would also get some additional new growth, but whatever that value is at the time, which is minimal. I don't know if that, if you want to add to that.
I, I think that, so new, new growth is treated a little bit differently, um, between personal property and real property. So if someone builds a five million dollar building, um, that gets treated as new growth, uh, the tax rate adjusts accordingly. In essence, the county and the tax entities receive new tax revenue from that. Personal property, on the other hand, um, for most categories and for the relevant categories we're talking about here, is generally excluded from that new growth calculation. So if I were to go put in a five million dollar solar farm, ignoring any sort of redevelopment agency participation, uh, that five mil, the, the property taxes I pay on that five million dollars would result in the overall, the county's overall tax rate going down, you know, some very small amount. But it wouldn't result in new tax dollars. So it wouldn't result in any new, new tax revenue. Um, the theory behind that being, you know, because personal property depreciates, if that's treated as new growth, that essentially shifts the tax burden to every other taxpayer in the county as that depreciates. And Nate, Nate, Nate is the, the tax guy by profession and he's nodding, so that's good.
That's right. And so the benefit is you do get a, you, it is new tax revenues to the county if you, if you have personal property come in through a CDA or CRA. If this is not included in the CRA or CDA, you get no new tax revenue. It would adjust the tax rates, but there's no new tax revenue for the, for the, any of the taxing entities. And that's why it's attractive for, um, the taxing entities to include these projects in, in a CRA or CDA so that the, the county can capture that, that tax revenue.
David, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what, uh, what Luke and Nicole is, are recommending. I think with the short term, that honestly, it's going to be easier to just move forward as is at the seventy percent. You don't have to do that if you decide you want to do that. But I think it's more about these new projects coming forward, right? We have a lot of solar projects. We have some battery projects that are coming or, or under construction coming. And I think really we want to do that analysis on moving forward. So, you know, I would definitely work with Luke and Nicole and Adam to do an analysis that really helps you better see what those percentages should be at. But I think moving forward, at least on this one, I, I think you can take a lot of confidence moving forward, especially with, uh, Luke and Nicole with their recommendation. I just wanted to echo my support for what they're saying, so. And I don't know if you have any other questions or thoughts?
I've, I've kind of expressed my sentiment. I have a hard time getting behind giving a tax break to an entity that's just doing this to get it together, to sell it to somebody else so that they can get a tax benefit from somewhere else. And then they're going to sell it to the next guy and so on and down the chain it goes. It's just a shell game that they move it around and around and around so they can get the federal tax break and run a TV ad saying, we're green. Right? Am I wrong?
Uh, those are, those are maybe some conceptual questions above my pay grade. They do only get the federal tax credit once.
That's why they sell it.
They, they get it by constructing it and that tax credit gets monetized, but, but it does only happen once.
Are they still going to get those federal tax credits? Because I did hear Trump say he was going to-
He, he's doing away with a lot of the Green New Deal.
If someone has an answer to those type of questions-
And I totally agree.
They should be in a different job than any of us here. If you can, if you can predict that, you have something.
I mean, I'll just say my feeling. I mean, I mean, on this one, I would probably vote to, I'm, I'm, I'm not making the motion, but I'd probably vote to extend the expansionary, but maybe look at a fifty percent on this one. That's my opinion. I don't know what, where you're at, Mike. I'd be lower than that.
I have, you know, I would be, I'm, I'm with Paul on this one. You know, we've, we've talked about this for a long time with our staff and everything else. I, I mean, I would be comfortable with that. Moving forward.
Moving forward, we can table the rest of them and have a, maybe have a Zoom call with you, Adam, and whoever to, to kind of discuss moving forward on these new projects. This is just expansion area, this one here.
Yeah, and like David said, the, the new projects are a much different discussion than this one. Um, as, as far as meeting logistics here, my suggestion, you could take one of two paths. You could approve everything, um, adding to the motion that the interlocal agreement terms be changed to fifty percent instead of seventy percent. Or we could table all of it, um, talk to the, the project developer and essentially say, you know, go or no go. The one benefit to that is we don't end up with our, with our proverbial cart before our horse. Um, if the, if we're not going to offer any sort of incentive, or if that's not a workable scenario for the developer, it doesn't make sense to add property to the project area. Um, so let's not create-
Wouldn't it make sense to pass this number eight and then table the rest and go through that process?
Correct. I think if we figure out where they stand, or I don't know if that's probably, probably above your pay grade to speak to.
Just because we decide to go with fifty percent on number eight, that doesn't mean we-
I think, I think we could-
Doesn't lock us into that on all of them, right?
I think we could take that direction and have those discussions with the project developer. And if they say, hey, we're, we're out, that doesn't work, um, then we don't have to do any of it, rather than doing part of it and it having been for not. Although if they say, let's go ahead, we have everything queued up to, to approve it in one batch. I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah, and I tell, I understand Commissioner Robinson's concern. If the commission says, look, that's too, we can't do it at that percentage, I, I would ask and recommend, let's, let's approve it at fifty and then we'll go back to the developer and make sure they're okay with that. And then we have the approvals done, we can move forward. If they have an issue with that, then we can certainly talk about that as well. But, you know, I, I would recommend, you know, doing that at fifty and then getting it approved, and we may be totally done, um, if the developers acceptable for that. So, and I can twist their-
Cole and Luke, how do you feel about, about that, about just doing the fifty percent for all of it? And I mean, I-
I feel good about doing that, approving, approving the fifty percent.
For everything, moving forward, and then see if they'll accept it. I mean, we, um, we're just, that's, that's the sentiment. It just seems like, especially like John said, we're, it seems like a bait and switch with moving from real property to personal property that we've, we haven't benefited near as much as what we thought in the beginning. Is that correct? Is, I mean, is that-
That's fair. I mean, I'm, I'm always an advocate for solar, but I, I think fundamentally we need to protect the interest of the county and the taxpayers. And so we need to make sure that any structure is one that, uh, that really does bring some benefit. Originally, we, it, it really seemed like it would. I mean, roughly you'd build a hundred million dollar project, you'd have a million dollars in taxes every year, and there would be three hundred thousand dollars in, in tax revenue. And, and, and I think really the, the cut the legs from under it was the fact that, you know, after fifteen years, you're depreciated to nine percent good. And, I mean, I have solar panels on my house, Paul has solar panels on his business in his house, and they're guaranteed to be eighty percent good after twenty-five years. And so I think the depreciation schedule, I'll be honest, there were some solar folks that advocated more strongly than we could as counties, and we lost that battle. It didn't seem like a fair depreciation schedule. And I think Iron County as one of the largest adopters of solar, uh, uh, which frankly, I'm very proud of, I think I, maybe I might have the only sentiment that, of that in the room. But, uh, you know, the revenue that we thought we might be able to capture really never materialized very much because that depreciation happens so quickly that by the time we get out of the incentive, we're at nine percent good on a hundred million dollar investment, and we're looking at ninety thousand dollars in taxes, not three hundred thousand.
Yeah, and just to be clear, that, that depreciation schedule is dictated by the state tax commission.
I understand. And, and I'm not, I, I'm just saying, that's the, but, but that, that's so fundamental to the space that we live in. Yeah, and, and so that's, that's, I mean, as much as I love it and, you know, I, I, I honestly, we got to do what's right for our, our constituents.
And I'll say, as Adam mentioned, one, one distinguishing factor here is that it really is five or six years. So we're just matching solar. So when the solar's done, battery's going to be done, it's totally done, it's all back on the tax rolls. So everything's going to be there. And as to depreciation, look, other, other jurisdictions, um, I do a lot of-
Do you want to speak into the mic, sorry?
Apologies. I do a lot of work in New Mexico, and they, they match the IRS depreciation. It's, it's five-year life for solar on IRS depreciation right now. And I'm, I'm just telling you, that's what-
That's even more aggressive.
It's ve, it's much more aggressive than what the state has. So I'm not necessarily-
It's one of the quiet incentives that's always kind of bugged me because you get incentivized upfront.
Right.
You get incentivized as you go, but, but, but I tell you what, the real problem with that is, is, you know, from, from the county, starting with a, with a, a, a desire to do what's, you know, do what's best is it kind of cuts the legs out from under us financially.
Right.
We've essentially just given away the farm.
And to what Adam was mentioning, this is different because this whole piece, the hundred and fifty million dollars in investment, it's on the tax rolls in, in five years at, at eighty percent. So you still have-
It's a different, different beast.
It's a different, it's a different animal.
Um, I'm sorry.
One other thing I want to bring up is, and we've talked about this before, but when these solar panels wear out, we've talked about, we are not going to take them to our landfill. That's, is that, in these agreements, is that clear?
So those, that's all covered in the conditional use permits for these projects, the remediation.
That carries through on these new agreements?
Yeah, it'll be the same. It's the same obligations exist.
You think about when these things wear out, unless they can recycle them, they'll fill our landfill and we'll be done.
Yeah, so that's all addressed in the land use process and-
That's right.
I was going to see if Reed had, but, but yeah, that's, that's addressed through the county land use process.
I'm going to, I'm going to scream into the void here for just a sec. And I know it's not in your interest and out of your power to do this, but one of the things that bugs me about the depreciation schedule is there's not a universe where with three hundred and forty thousand solar panels on the Parowan Gap plant, that they haven't replaced a few of those. And I just cannot believe that, you know, those don't get captured because that starts your depreciation over even one panel. And I don't know how to hold, you know, developers and owners' feet to the fire on that because that would make a fairly significant difference on, 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 on our side of things.
And, and maybe that's something we can, maybe, maybe that's something that Clearway can provide, you know, as far as what that, you know, panel life or panel replacement at least typically looks like across projects generally, um, to help us get an idea.
One panel replacement, reset the whole thing?
Well, it would be for that particular panel.
Yeah, but, but then you've got to keep track of three hundred and forty thousand panels. But, but that's my point, you know? That's, yeah, that's a big spreadsheet.
Well, if, if the inclination is to approve things at fifty percent, that fifty percent concept applies to number nine, number thirteen and number fifteen on the agenda.
And this was, this was the not Saturday version, so I don't know which one you're looking at.
Nicole?
That's not the Antelope Springs, is it? I think we need to not approve that until-
Yeah, no, I-
Which one's Antelope Springs?
Hold on, I got to look at, everything that says interlocal agreement on this one, we had to tweak the order a little bit.
So twelve is Antelope Springs?
Twelve is Antelope Springs, and I can, I can speak to that really quickly.
So Nicole, you guys are okay with everything but Antelope Springs at fifty percent?
I think we just need to analyze and come up with a good-
On Antelope, but on the others, you're on the on the expansion area and then the others besides Antelope, you're good with 50. Feel good about that?
Yeah, and on the Antelope Springs item, this is a a totally new project. Where a developer approached David and I. Six to nine months ago, and it's sort of resurfaced. The agenda item here is approving what we call a survey area resolution. That's essentially step zero in the process where.
So can we approve? Eight, nine, 10, 11, and 11, and then we have to reconvene as the the other service district? Can we do that? Or do, can we combine those, or do we have to vote on separately?
I think you'd want to vote on them separately.
I would vote on them separately, yeah.
Each one has its own unique thing that it's doing.
And the Antelope Springs one is just starting the process. Really, it's the authorization for David and I and county officials to look at it. Not committing to anything in particular.
I'll entertain a motion and and Commissioner Robinson, if you don't. Agree with something and not vote against it, you just don't make the motion. You make one of us do it. So that's how.
I will abstain. All right, so. Do, can I? Yes, John, can I read eight? Through 11? Do I need to read, do I need to read each of the, each of them to a separate motion on each of them?
Would, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. All right, but I'll just, I will do all of, I'll I'll whip through these. And then how, what do I, what's my verbiage as far as a 50%? Just as a.
I would tack it on the end that and I'd make sure, are you okay with it?
I would make that part of your motion to approve on here. Agenda item number nine and agenda item number 10. Make that, add that 50% language to your motion.
We don't need to do it on eight?
Not on eight.
Okay.
Fifty percent to the end of the Iron Springs project, right?
Yeah, so it currently says 70% in our documents. We'd essentially be changing that to 50%.
We would want to, we would want to make that the motion for eight, wouldn't we? Just so it's clear on the record that we want to, we're not continuing at 70, we're gonna go 50.
Sure.
But now let me be a stick in the mud. Are we talking about 50% for the project period or 50% for the new part?
Just just for the battery part.
Just for the battery.
For the 22, already all locked in, the 100 and.
Do we feel like what we're, because we were going to just modify the old area. In Nicole's world and in in Carrie Jeffrey's world. You're talking about. Then different tax rates within the same tax area.
Same tax rate, just a different withholding percentage.
Oh, yeah, because it happens on the tail end.
And it's and it's just for the personal property battery project, so.
We have to pay the battery project separate anyway?
Anyway?
Well, me and, yeah, me and Nicole figure the 50 separate.
Okay, okay. Strike that.
Okay. So not. I'm not, I'm talking 50% on number nine and 10.
Yeah.
You just need to make a motion on the.
Let's let's do this just for ease of speaking. Let's say 50% for the. The amended portion with the battery. So that we can clarify. Is, are you okay with that, Adam?
That will work for me.
And I think that will be clear language and expressly the intent what the commissioners are doing and not totally screw up their world. So that was.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. So number eight, I'll move for approval. The ICC DNRA Resolution 2025-1, a resolution approving and adopting the amended community development project area plan. For the Iron Springs Solar Community Development Project Area, and this is on. The amended portion of the battery storage.
Expansion area, right?
Expansion area.
And it's and it's 100 and acres, but you're only using a 22.
It's 160 acre parcel.
160 and you're using like 22 of it.
Things all work when you follow parcel boundaries as far as calculating property tax.
All right, but that's that's all I need for the motion on that.
Need to add the 50%.
And then, so you then amended portion of the of the battery expansion area at a 50% participation rate.
I'll second that. So it's been moved in second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you're.
No.
No.
I am nay.
So it's two, two ayes and one nay. So, okay.
All right, then I'll go on to number nine. Move for approval of ICC DNRA Resolution 2025-2, a resolution approving an amended interlocal agreement for Iron Springs Solar. Development Project Area. Again, at a 50% participation. For that project.
For the bat, for the battery portion.
For the battery portion of that project.
Second. It's been moved in second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion passes. Two ayes and one nay. Number 10.
A move for approval of ICC DNRA Resolution 2025-3, a resolution approving a participation agreement for the Iron Springs Solar Community Development Project Area. For the battery expansion portion at a 50% participation.
Second, it's been moved in second, or moved in second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye. So so it passes, but two ayes and one nay.
I didn't have to write anything for a while, and I gotta write really fast.
Don't you know shorthand, John?
So number 11 here is a kind of a side letter agreement, just an acknowledgement from the solar entity that. This is how we're splitting up the tax increment. This is the same as we did for the other projects. I think a similar motion would be appropriate here.
Great. And then on a number 11, I'll move for approval of authorizing the agency. Agency to sign an acknowledgement letter relating to the new battery storage participation agreement. For the Iron Springs CDA at a 50%. Participation.
Second. It's been moved in second in all favor?
Aye.
And number 12 here is the Antelope Springs Survey Area Resolution. So as I said, this is, this is step zero in the process.
Right.
We've already approved a reimbursement agreement for this. This is essentially authorizing continued discussions and working. Getting to the point where we're discussing percentages, years, what these incentive terms look like without locking the agency into anything.
So so you're asking us to prove this, but we're gonna, but but the amount is still on the table?
Absolutely. Everything is on the table.
And maybe maybe just clarify what it means to designate a survey area.
Uh, we 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 take our marker and we draw a circle on the map where we think there might be a potential project area. This is a situation where. It's a renewable energy developer called Bright Knight has. Control of quite a few acres of land, some of it private, some of it sit la. I think it's probably all lease option. Where they're proposing a a solar and potentially battery project. So this is area where they have either control or an option for control of the land.
But you're not, you're not hiring a surveyor. You're just trying to identify a spot on the ground.
They've identified the spot where they think a project is plausible. And this is really allowing the agency to move forward with those discussions, but but not locking us into anything at all. So I I would ask that you approve it. You're certainly not obligated to.
Approve it pending what we agreed to on the percentage.
Well, this is, this is an entire entirely new discussion on percentages terms, whether the agency wants to support this one at all.
Approving to move forward and discuss.
This is just the statutorily required first step.
And we already did the reimbursement agreement in November. So Adam is the the agency attorney and the people who want to do solar have to give. The agency a certain amount of money.
We we essentially asked the developers to cover the setup costs in case this project never materializes, the agency's not.
Way we don't eat it.
Not left eating that bill.
Yeah, and so Adam has been, we've been through that part, and now it's just the very next step as far as allowing Adam to move forward with some of the early logistics. Is that a safe way to put it?
Yeah, it's really just, the next step is just like conceptual discussions.
One concern that came up from staff is that, you know, we've approved projects 10 years ago and they still haven't happened. And then they can happen now and, I mean, is there a, is that a clause where?
Timeline?
So those.
That's a good question.
Those clauses in every participation agreement we've done, we have a clause saying, you know, we have a commercial operation deadline, saying if the project isn't in operation by this date. The agency's off the hook.
Yeah.
So that's, that's in every single agreement I've done for.
What is that, what is that length of time, do you know?
It depends on the project. Our typical approach has been take, you know, take their expected commercial operation date and tack a year or so of cushion on.
Give them some cushion. And and didn't we have one, Adam, that was really slow getting started and the commission allowed it? And but basically, they just ate years of increment, right?
We've, we've had some that never materialized. We've had some that were slow. We've had some that we later came back and amended. To essentially allow them to start late, but then getting, I think it was 12 or 13 years of of increment instead of 15. But the agreements are written such that if they don't meet that commercial operation deadline, the agency has no obligation to pay them anything.
It drops off.
I'll entertain a motion on number 12.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. I'd make a motion to approve. For approval of ICCD NAR Resolution 2025-4. Resolution designating the survey areas contemplated by UTUC. And following code in the agenda for the proposed Antelope Springs Community Reinvestment Project Area.
Second.
It moved to second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we'll convene as Iron County Unincorporated Area Service District Number Two.
Say that 10 times fast.
Okay, we'll go to 13. Discussion.
We we need to tweak the order here a little bit, okay?
Yeah.
So.
What have you got written?
You need to print some hats for us so we can keep hats off.
If you're serious, I can arrange that.
I'm teasing.
Okay, so, Adam, what we have on the screen is, remember I had to come in on Saturday to make that change? So 13 is the UASD Resolution 2025-1.
Yeah, great, okay.
Ordinance 2025-4, but after they reconvene as the county commission, is that correct? UASD.
So you saying this needs to move down here?
Nope, it, what what you've got there is correct. So. If we're gonna re, the commissioners will convene as.
We're now in in service area, service district.
Yeah, so so they have the one you updated, John?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, we're.
Spring was Chanel had already made the packet on Friday.
We're we're in business with what John hasn't.
We just have 13 in that one.
Yeah, we had to make a change on Saturday.
So we're correct, okay. All right, entertain a.
And so the language on 13 includes the 50%?
Yep.
Okay. I'll move for approval of USA, US. UASD number two, resolution, Resolution 2025-1. Resolution approving an amended interlocal agreement for the Iron Springs Solar Community. Development Project Area, considering a 50% participation.
Second. All in favor? Moved in second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey.
That's unanimous, okay. Now we'll reconvene as the Iron County.
Two of, two of three.
It's close to you, Adam.
Oh, you said nay? I thought you said.
That's right, he was sitting next to me, I got it.
You gotta speak up, man. All right, two out of three, uh, for 13. So reconvene as Iron County Commission. Number 14, discussion of possible approval of ordinance 2025-4. Approving the amended project area plan for the Iron Springs Community Development Project Area.
And I'm so sorry, I was writing, you did reconvene as the?
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't catch that.
So I'll entertain a motion for 14.
And this one doesn't require, or is this one?
Throw it in there.
I wrote, I wrote notes, but I didn't know, I didn't, I, I thought my, yeah, I wasn't sure my notes were correct.
Yeah, we we can include it.
Great, okay. Uh, move for approval of ordinance 2025-4, approving the amended project area plan for the Iron Springs Community Development Project Area, considering a 50%. Participation.
Second, moved in second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay, so it's two out of three there. Motion passes. Number 15, discussion of possible approval of Resolution 2025-4, approving an amended. Interlocal agreement for the Iron Springs Community Development Project Area.
I'll move for approval of Resolution 2025-4, approving an amended interlocal agreement for the Iron Springs Community Development Project Area, considering a 50%. Participation.
I'll second that. It's been moved to second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
And so two out of three on that one. So we're, it passes. Uh, thank you, Adam.
Thank you for having me.
You made us really think today.
I, I will try not to do that in the, hey, this butters my bread, so.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, 16 personnel, Jennifer.
Hello. Do we need to reconvene?
Uh. No, we're back in the county commission.
Good deal. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't doing the wrong here.
You're not gonna hire people for the unincorporated service area district two?
That was my concern, so we're good.
Tell them all they're working for a different entity.
That's right.
Well, the sheriff would like that.
Payroll out of somewhere else.
They don't, they don't, they don't collect that much tax.
He'll make the payroll come out somewhere else and put them to work. I don't care.
That works. Thank you. So in the Iron County Sheriff's Office Patrol side. Caleb Anderson was selected from an internal posting to be promoted from a full-time sergeant. To a full-time lieutenant beginning April 13th, 2025. And Caleb will be moving from a non-exempt status to an exempt status, so I wanted to get that on the record. Michael Hilliger, also in patrol. Was selected from an internal roster, receive a promotion from a full-time corporal to a full-time sergeant beginning 4/13 of 2025.
Does that, Jennifer, sorry to interrupt.
No worries.
That need to be in the motion about the?
Yes, from the status, yeah.
So whoever makes that motion needs to remember that.
And then in the Sheriff's Office Corrections. Riley Bastian was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time. Corrections Deputy One position effective 4/6 of 2025. In the Parks and Recreation Department, Tanner Campbell was selected from the most recent recruiting interview. And selection process to backfill the vacant full-time seasonal park maintenance technician position effective 4/28, 2025. And then in the Engineer Department, Matthew Arnold was selected from the most recent recruiting and interview selection process. To backfill the vacant full-time engineer operator excavator position effective 4/14 of 25.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the personnel. Additions. Including moving to an exempt status, Caleb Anderson.
Second.
It's been moved to second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. All right, thank you. Boards, county boards, I know we got, like I said, we got Dennis Gray. Put in.
Did have somebody on the weed board step down and we're looking for a new replacement for them.
Okay.
You've used it before, right?
Uh, I got a text during the meeting, this is off a little bit, but Paul Munderall asked us to. Write a letter of support from the county to the, to support Cedar City's. Application for a grant with the federal government to do something with the affluent, so. You got that email?
Yes, and we should have a copy of that. Already, I don't know where it is, but.
Service, man.
Hey, I don't know about the smile, but we got service.
All right, um, so we are now going to, I need a motion to go into closed session.
I would move, to move into closed session for. Strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
Do we need to quote the number, or is that good enough, John?
Oh.
52-4205?
Okay, sorry, sorry, I got ahead of myself.
That was the one I had written down when you talked to me.
Okay.
That one?
52-4205?
It's E.
Oh, it's E, okay. Let me redo my motion. I will, uh.
I told you the wrong one.
Oh, sorry.
All right. I move to enter into closed session pursuant to UCA 52-4-2051E.
And then, yeah, and then read the, for the. The sale of, or whatever it says.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. We've been going for four hours.
Uh, 1E for a strategy session to discuss, discuss the sale of real property.
Okay.
Second time motion.
It's been moved to second and go into closed session for the purposes stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have it written in front of me and I still can't.